Good evening and welcome to the Town of Gostown Board of Selectmen meeting for April 8, 2013. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first order of business is the acceptance and correction of the minutes of our March 28, 2013, meeting. Do we have any...
Move to accept if there are any corrections needed.
A motion to accept, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any corrections, additions, deletions? Nothing? No further discussion, I'll take a motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? I should note for the public that Selectman DeVanzo won't be with us tonight, so that motion passes 4-0. Next are announcements. We have a few announcements this evening. I'll start with what I have. We received a thank you note. Address the Board of Selectmen, the family of Annie M. Vincent wishes to thank you for your kindness and sympathy at a time when it was deeply appreciated. In his love Beverly Marion and Gail Shirley. I'll sit around if folks haven't seen it. Another announcement, actually news release. The Gostown Police Department announces another one day collaborative effort with federal, state, county, and local law enforcement agencies to remove potentially dangerous substances from our households. This National Take Back Initiative will provide a unified opportunity for the public to surrender pharmaceutical substances and other medications to law enforcement officers for destruction. The 2008 National Survey on Drug Use and Health estimates there are 6.2 million current non-medical users of psychotherapeutic drugs in the United States. The survey further indicates there are more Americans abusing psychotherapeutics than cocaine, heroin, and hallucinogen abusers combined. Expired, unused, or unwanted controlled substances in our homes are a potential source of supply that fuels this abuse and are an unacceptable risk to public health and safety. Here in New Hampshire, 20% of high school students surveyed have reported the abuse of a prescription-type medicine without a prescription. The Gostown Police Department is requesting residents to support the cause by turning in their unwanted, unused, or expired prescription medications for the purpose of disposal. This one-day event will take place on Saturday, April 27, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Gostown Police Department at 326 Mass. Road in Gostown. These unused prescription drugs will be turned over to the DEA Drug Enforcement Agency for destruction. For further information in regards to this initiative, please contact Sergeant Kevin LaRoche at 497-4858 or visit www.nationaltakebackday.com. So we would encourage residents to take advantage of that initiative. I have another announcement, a news release. Gostown Little League Annual Opening Day Parade. On Saturday, April 27, 2013, the Gostown Little League Baseball, or Gostown Junior Baseball as it's known locally, will be celebrating their opening day with their annual parade. Starting at approximately 8:00 a.m., baseball players and their teams will be marching from Maple Avenue Elementary School through the center of the town to celebrate the beginning of their season. The Gostown Police Department and the Gostown Fire Department will also participate in the parade. The parade starts at Maple Avenue Elementary School, goes down Main Street to South Mass. Street to the Villa Agostina School. The parade will last approximately one hour. Please plan alternate routes during this period of time. I'd also like that a footnote that the Gostown Junior Baseball is in desperate need of volunteer umpires. If there's anybody watching on GTV-16 who would like to volunteer that worthwhile cause, you can give me a call, contact me directly at 384-1514 or through the Gostown website. There is one other announcement about Pleasant Street. Sue, I don't have...
It's in your packet at 2A.
A news release for traffic alert for roadwork on Pleasant Street in Gostown. The Gostown Department of Public Works and Village Water Precinct announced ledge probe work on Friday, April 5th, I'm sorry, Friday, April 5th, last week, 2013, along Pleasant Street from Main Street to Bog Road. Work is expected to begin around 8:00 a.m. and will last all day. The road will be open to two-way traffic, but delays are to be expected. This notice and project update are posted on the town's website. Please contact Megan Terrio, Town Engineer, at 497-3617, extension 280 with any questions. Are there other announcements from board members?
Yes, there was an email I sent you today. I don't know if you had a chance to print it out.
This is a letter dated April 3, 2013. Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, reference employee recognition. Dear Chairman Adams, all too often we get caught up in the day-to-day and the efforts of the unsung heroes go unrecognized. Yesterday, we had a fire at the transfer station. The trash trailer connected to the compactor building had caught on fire. Once discovered, several of the DPW crew worked very quickly to save the building and minimize damage to the trailer while waiting for the arrival of the fire department. Without hesitation, Bill Holt instinctively jumped out of the excavator to get the yard horse fired up and connected to the trailer that could be pulled off the building once the fire department arrived. Meanwhile, Myron Bolio and Don Hebert brought loader buckets of water to dump into the compactor to help extinguish the flames. Once fire was ready, Tim Severia and Walter Hoskins helped Bill with unlatching the trailer from the building so that fire could finish it off with the hoses. I'm convinced that these men did not do what they did, the town would be faced with much greater costs of repair and replacement of the compactor building and the trailer, not to mention the interruption in the daily operations as the town sought an alternative tipping location. For their actions, I'd like to publicly thank Bill Holt, Myron Bolio, Don Hebert, Tim Severia, and Walter Hoskins, and ask that the Board of Selectmen join me in recognizing these men as exemplary employees, and it's signed by Michael Hillhouse, Assistant Director of DPW. Certainly would like to express our gratitude for their efforts. Well done.
Mr. Chairman, could we write a letter directly to each one of those and thank them personally for the job well done?
I think that's a worthwhile suggestion.
Going above and beyond?
Yeah, I think that's great. Are there any other public announcements that members of the Board or administration may have to make? Nothing? Okay, thank you. Now is the opportunity for members of the public to address the Board of Selectmen if they have any questions or concerns. I don't see any members of the public here. They'll have another opportunity later on in the evening around 7:30. We're at item number four. This is to accept a donation. The donation is the printing of the Panardville Planning Fires valued at $190 from Liberty Press, and also a donation of surplus office furniture valued at about $4,900 from State Farm Insurance. That's the furniture we're sitting in now and is elsewhere in the room. So we need a motion to accept these donations?
Motion to accept. The first one will be the Panardville Planning Flyer valued at $190 from Liberty Press, and the second one would be surplus office furniture valued at $4,900 from State Farm.
That's great. If nobody objects, we'll deal with both donations in one motion. You'll second the motion for both donations? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 4-0.
Mr. Chairman, same. Letter of thank you for both individuals.
Do you want those? I sent one already because I needed it for the office furniture. Do you want me to send one from the Board though?
I would think.
Yes. Next item on the agenda, tab number five, is Public Works Director Carl Querem with a presentation.
On the agenda, I forgot to take off bid awards. You see, it doesn't appear on my report, but on the agenda it did, but we're not ready for those. Carl will be ready probably next week on those.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, Carl.
Good evening. The Board had asked for an update of the UnConunak Lake Dam Study. So I did forward you the report that was prepared. This was a project we undertook last year. Unfortunately, the conclusion came too late, incorporated into last year's budget cycle. However, I did provide you with the report. I don't know if the Board wants to go through it. It was a standard study. At the end of the conclusion, the dam definitely does need some attention. The engineer evaluated four different alternatives for us. Alternative one was to rehabilitate the existing dam and raise the embankment elevation to meet the new flood spillway requirements. Alternative two, removes the core wall, rehabilitates the embankment, and constructs new drop inlet spillway. Alternative three would completely reconstruct a brand-new dam in kind on-site. And then one of the things we did ask them to look at just for conversation's sake, because we know somebody in the community would be interested in it, is alternative four to remove and breach the dam and eliminate it altogether. And you can see that that was about a $59,000 estimate. I'm sure that these alternatives will be discussed kind of as we go through next year's budget process. The state is aware of where we're at on this, so it's really just incumbent on us to pursue this through the process. So happy to answer questions. I would assume the Board would like a chance to kind of chew on it. And quite frankly, I kind of got a little sidetracked as well. And I had a conversation about a specific component of this with Attorney Drescher. And Attorney Drescher told me of a case similar to this in Milford that I thought warranted some review on our part. So I'm kind of in the midst of pulling together a packet of information rather than let Bill do all the research. I figured I would get as much research done as I could and give him a packet of paper. But essentially, it's when the deeds were originally let in that impound, when it was originally built, who was the beneficiary of the impound, what was its purpose, and who benefits from it today? Because despite the fact that the town owns the property the dam sits on, this case law suggests that it's actually the beneficiary of the impound that would be responsible for its care and upkeep. This is a significant enough amount of money that I thought a review of the history of the pond and the dam and who owns what and who's responsible for what and what was its purpose just seems like it would be in order. So I've got that file, probably about two-thirds pulled together. I've got a few more deeds to chase, and then at some point I'll send it off to Attorney Drescher just to see how he views what I give him in the packet.
But to be clear, we're under a state order. There is no do-nothing alternative. It must be repaired to acceptable standards or removed.
Or removed.
Just want to make sure folks understand that. So something has to be done.
That is correct. You know, strangely enough, if you're not familiar with the pond up there, there's actually a dike at the other end as well. And that dike is owned by Gostown Village Water Precinct. They are currently engaged to consult studying. They got the same kind of letter, and they're currently in the midst of their study. However, the active flowing water comes over the spillway on our side, so it's a little more involved for us. But again, I do think it's worthy to take the time to look at the history of the pond, the history of the dam, all of those things, and then, you know, make an intelligent decision how to move forward together as a community.
And as I understand it, early on in the process, the town and the water approached the water precinct about working cooperatively, retaining one engineer to look at both, and they were not interested in that sort of arrangement.
Well, the problem we had was they had already selected a consultant and were already engaged with a consultant. We chose to do, to go through a QBS selection process just in case we should get the ability to get some federal grant money. And whenever you get federal money, they require a consultant selection process. So we decided to step back, go through the process, not that there is an active grant at the moment, but so that if we got grant money, the design work we'd done would be eligible.
There are some questions from board members for Carl at this point? We've obviously got to take some time to look at this and, you know, evaluate the different options while you're doing your research, as I understand it, into this situation that's similar down in Milford.
Yeah, I mean, as you can see, it's a very comprehensive report. The consultant, I think, did a fabulous job for us, but the conclusion unfortunately was we can't just go smear a little water bug on it. Carl, good.
So is that the wishes of the Board, to take a little time to look at this and evaluate and come back with questions for Carl next week or the week after? Is a week sufficient for folks to look at? It's really not that voluminous a report, but it does warrant some close scrutiny, I think.
Our wide issues were thicker than ours.
Well, this, what I didn't provide the Board, and I'm happy to leave this copy, all of the attachments, which are a lot of photographs and color maps and all that stuff, not all of them are in the documentation I gave you. This has everything in it. The email would have just been too enormous. So I'd be happy to leave this though so the Selectmen can...
Yeah, we can leave it in our room next door. We can each take a look at it at leisure. And so should we put it on the agenda for next week?
I won't be here next week.
Okay.
Two weeks?
Well, two weeks.
Two weeks, yeah.
You have to look at it.
Yeah. And then the other item you're here for tonight, Carl, is the MS4 stormwater rules?
Yes. You have a slight error on your thing that is not final. What we have are the latest draft. And let me just back up and give the Board and the viewers at home just a little brief history. Back in 2003, the Town of Gostown, along with about 40 other towns and cities, mostly in southern New Hampshire, entered into a general permit with EPA to manage our stormwater. We knew this was coming for several years. As a matter of fact, the first time I heard about it was like in 1998. It took several years to get that first general permit together and get everybody on board with it. But we entered into our first stormwater permit in 2003, they're five-year permits. In 2000, and just to boil down the basic concept, and I provided you a summary of what's changed, but there are basically six minimum control measures that that original permit required towns and cities to undertake. We had a public education and outreach component, a public involvement and participation component, illicit discharge detection and elimination, which is, you know, sewer pipes tied into drain lines, that sort of thing. Control and construction sites, stormwater runoff, stormwater management. I'm looking at the wrong thing. I'm into some of the 13 stuff. Good housekeeping and pollution prevention. And basically, record-keeping and reporting. The concept of that '03 permit was a recognition that our infrastructure, particularly here in the Northeast, is very old, and that it was going to take time for us to study the impacts, where the problems were, and start to get them under control. There was all this talk in that '03 permit about doing everything we can to the maximum extent practicable, MEP. That was the main theme. So we did. There was no sampling involved. It was merely a visual sample of our outfalls. If we saw something, toilet paper coming out of the end of a pipe, for instance, then we would take a more active role in trying to figure it out. In 2008, a new draft permit came out because the '03 one was reaching its expiration. That '08 permit, for the first time, mentioned water quality standards. We were suddenly going to have to sample, actually sample our outfalls and really start to look at, even though the water looks clean, is it? There was going to be a very large cost component to that. It generated a lot of comments. All municipalities across southern New Hampshire commented in force. Everybody had to evaluate how we would comply with the new thing. Needless to say, it took five years before we finally got a revised draft permit and new comments, or the answers to our comments, because EPA has to address any comments they receive.
Carl, can I just interrupt for a minute just for the benefit of the viewers? The reason we're doing this is because it's a mandate by EPA.
That's correct. I'm sorry, I should have started there.
Because they recognize that stormwater discharges into our lakes, rivers, streams, and ponds contributes to degradation water quality, so they developed these rules. And it's a mandate that's handed down from the feds.
That's correct.
EPA to us.
That is correct.
Just a quick question, and this is pertaining only to municipal storm sewer systems?
This particular MS4, which is what this permit is, is municipal small storm sewers. So it's, this component is specifically for municipal drainage systems. EPA looks at how they determine who's in, who's out, is based on, it's all part of the Clean Water Act, I should say, right from the get-go. So this isn't something just EPA cooked up on their own. It's, the Clean Water Act, when it was implemented, gave a deferral over a period of time to communities on stormwater runoff. It was like 20 years we got to not actively do this. I think it was in '87 or so, Congress finally lifted that moratorium on municipal drainage systems in Phase 1 communities at that point, which are larger communities, 100,000 people or more, had to start looking at their infrastructure, their drainage infrastructure. We're small enough that we came into the Phase 2 part, which again, 1998, everybody started getting geared up for it. 2003, the first general permit was launched. So in 2008, the comments were voluminous. As a matter of fact, I have, the response to comments is a 187-page document where EPA responds to all the comments they receive. Over the last five years, what has also happened, because it's kind of like a double whammy that we're facing, not only do communities get to comment on these permits, but so does the Conservation Law Foundation and the CIGERA Club and all other watershed advisory committees and everybody under the sun. So EPA gets kind of blasted from both sides. And what also has been going on is the state of New Hampshire, who, under the Clean Water Act, is responsible for setting groundwater quality standards in each state is responsible for that. So the state of New Hampshire has diligently been working along at getting their hands around our water quality issues in the state of New Hampshire. So there's an impaired water body list, and then the impairments that are really severe, they start to develop what's called TMDLs, or Total Maximum Daily Load, numbers that define waste loading, how much stuff you can actually discharge into a river or a lake. So over the five years while EPA was chewing on our comments in the '08 permit, DES was doing what they do, and they were coming up with this nice, big, giant list of impaired waters. And EPA, which is looking back on it, no big surprise because of Clean Water Act, all kind of laid this out. But overnight, it feels like overnight, we went from a maximum extent practicable, we're all going to work together and do our best to clean up the water kind of permit, to this draft, if it sticks, will give New Hampshire the most stringent water quality stormwater permit in the nation. We have numerical limits that we have to meet that are, in my humble opinion, the most impossible to meet. And the major driving difference that really is what got me really excited about it is the old permit, which there was a recognition that our systems would require some work and we're going to work together to get through it, is completely gone. And now, literally, we're in violation the day we sign the permit. And under potential penalty of law and fines, we have to work towards compliance, under the gun of being out of compliance, which to me is totally, you know, just it makes me feel like I'm a criminal for things that have happened over the last couple hundred years that I had nothing to do with, and it just isn't a place where I think the town ought to be. What we're doing, I don't know if the Board wants to go through these. I gave you some summaries which highlight what the changes in the permit are and what it kind of means to the town. We certainly do not have the staff to administer all of the things that we need to administer. Now, I mean, just from the base level, you know, we have about 80 outfalls that are on our list that EPA has, but they've redefined outfalls or clarified what an outfall is. So now we have to include things like swales. We didn't, before it was a physical pipe. Now it's, if there's swales or anything that conveys stormwater in the waters of the United States, that's an outfall. So we're going to have a lot more of them. The urbanized area has expanded, so parts of our system that before were not in are now in. So that expands our system. And now we have to actively, the first two years of the permit, we have to actively go sample every pipe. If we find something, we begin to accrue potential penalties immediately. And we have 60 days to find the problem in the pipe, which, you know, we had one of these a few years ago in Panardville. We called DES, DES responded immediately, we got together, we came up with a plan to try to figure out where it was. Every time it rained, we were down... Every time it rained, we were down there sampling. And it took five and a half months to chase that up through our system before we finally found an illicit connection. Sometimes they're obvious, sometimes not so much. In this current draft, it's, it's a sixty-day, you've got sixty days to do it. Now, if you read their comments, the, where they address comments, there's all this language about, well, if you're working with it, our intention is not to fine you or something right away. We just want to make sure you're working. But that's not what it says. If you read the permit, it doesn't say that. The permit is very explicit and quite scary. And with thirty-seven thousand dollar fines per day, it doesn't take long to really get your attention that this is something we need to take very seriously. So I, I don't see a benefit in going through every one of these unless the board wants to. There's going to, if whatever gets through this permit, we're going to have to do a lot of public education. We are a member, Goffstown is a member and has been since oh-three, of a coalition of communities, the Manchester Stormwater Coalition. There's also a Nashua Stormwater Coalition, and there's a Seacoast Stormwater Coalition. So all of the communities have kind of grouped together to share resources for things like public education and outreach and all those things. All three of those coalitions met last week, and we are talking about joining, forming a New Hampshire Stormwater Coalition, which brings the three separate coalitions together. One of the things that I want the board to consider is, I don't have a problem with doing our part to clean up water. The Biscataqua River is central to this town. It's a key resource. The Merrimack River is a key resource. I don't think there's a person in this room or a person involved in government that wouldn't say, we should do whatever we can to clean up our water. We all rely on it. The problem I have is I read through some of the changes that they've made is, I'm just not so sure that everything in this thing is, is bounded in law or in good science. I don't know that. But it's such a huge price tag. If we just sign on and say, okay, we're going to do our best, the cost is so large that I don't feel comfortable just coming into you and saying, ah, this is what EPA says. Let's just go do it. I really don't. I, I just, I've sat there and I've looked through just our data here in Goffstown, and I just, I have questions. I have a lot of questions.
So if you don't sign, Carl, what's the penalty?
Nothing right now. EPA, comments were due into EPA by April fifteenth originally. They just gave us a extension at our request. Well, our request and DES's request. It wasn't just the communities. DES has agreed to meet with us, because what, what has happened, DES is not directly involved in this permit, but DES's water quality data and DES's water quality standards are the core ingredient in this new permit. So I think, to a degree, the extent to which EPA incorporated all that into this permit caught everybody by surprise. So we have a meeting scheduled for Wednesday afternoon with DES, and we just sent them an agenda with all of our joint concerns with the communities that, that met last week. And just to give you an idea of how big of a deal this is, I sent an email out. We had our public hearing two weeks ago in Portsmouth, two and a half weeks ago. I called Bill Drescher on my way home from that meeting, had a conversation with him, called an environmental attorney that I know very well, and had a conversation with him, sent an email out to all of the cities and towns affected. And we had fifty-one people at a meeting called less than a week in advance. I'm not sure if it was twenty or twenty-five communities, but at least twenty-five communities sitting in a room on a week's notice. So the MS four communities are really, really nervous about this, and the impacts are very large. We dodged the most costly component of this. For now, we've dodged a bullet, and that's nutrients and phosphorus. However, in the draft water quality list that is currently floating around in DES's outbasket, we pick up a phosphorus hit. So we, we might dodge it for now, but it's, the bullet's in the chamber and they're waiting. And when you get that kind of contaminant that you have to deal with, it's unbelievably costly.
And what, what happens if you find the source of the contaminant, and it's on private land?
Well, again, that's a great question, because in this permit, we're the criminal until we prosecute the criminal. So it, and that, that's another huge shift in this. It used to be that we signed on to the permit. EPA was our partner. They were more or less the enforcer. We found the problem. We called them up, said, hey, we found X, Y, Z, and it was kind of on them to deal with it. Now, we're the enforcer. So, like, construction site runoff, every single little house lot, we not only have to go check their sedimentation rules, we have to develop an ordinance that we can go in and fine them if they're not doing it right. We police it. The illicit discharge, we have to now prosecute and chase our residents. And I'll, I'll tell you what. I mean, I've found, I think in the last five years, we've had two or three of these. These people are not criminals. You know, these are people that hired somebody, my sewer's backed up, please come fix it. And whatever contractor went and fixed it, did their best job to fix it. Well, now, they're criminals, and penalties, and, and it's on us to chase it. Then the one I love the most, the one I love the most is chloride. This permit expects us not only to manage our own salt application in winter, but we're supposed to come up with a plan to, how much salt is Hanaford using? And Shaw's, and every other private entity in town, we're supposed to keep track of it. We're supposed to police it. Now, the state of New Hampshire's trying to get a program, a statewide program going, but I believe the legislature's shot it down twice.
Twice, yeah.
So this permit says, if the state does it, great. If they don't, it's on you as a town. So, you know, and, and that's the kind of stuff that we're staring down the barrels of having to sign on to.
And it's worth noting that in these MS four communities, virtually every single surface water body is impaired for something or other. Virtually every single one of them.
Yeah. And, you know, the problem is, they're impaired. Let me just give you a real, real, real quick example. The biggest thing is bacteria. So because of my eyesight, I had Alex print our bacteria data so I could see it. Everything in green is Glenn Lake. We have tons of data on Glenn Lake. So there's an impairment for bacteria on Glenn Lake. It's not a bad impairment. I mean, any impairment's bad, but in this permit, they're contemplating a reduction of eight percent on our part for what's going in for bacteria. We have two other bacteria impairments where we're responsible for eighty-six and eighty-three percent reduction in the, in the, the water quality and the bacteria. This right here is one of them. That's Catamount Brook. There's five samples. The five samples are just down gradient of the pig farm. But I have to come up with a very large detailed plan on how I'm going to deal with bacteria in Catamount Brook. Any one of us that's ever driven by that pig farm, I think we'd have a pretty good idea of why there's probably some bacteria samples. Down here is Harry Brook. There are four samples, all taken within two months of the Mother's Day flood. I would expect that there probably was some bacteria problems shortly after the Mother's Day flood. When I asked DES about why is this on the impaired waters list, the answer is, we really don't have the budget to go after it. So the last sample is in two thousand and six. There hasn't been anything since. Is it impaired or is it not? I don't know. But there was four samples that show up on this list. And because of it, we're in. Those are the kind of things that I just feel like we really need to investigate. And if more science needs to go into this, I think we need to put the science into it and figure it out, because the cost of compliance, there's one up here that's one sample. Massey Lake, it's on the list, one sample. And I, I just have a problem with that. You know, I really, really do. So I, I am very interested in going up to DES and having a conversation with them. I view them as our partner in this. I think they're doing what they were supposed to do, and they are doing it with the resources they have available. But they don't have enough resources to do what really needs to be done. And all of us communities are going to pay the price for that. And it's a big price. It's, I, I'm trying to figure out the cost to us, and it's, I can't even really get my hands around it, because we have to TV all our drain pipes over the five-year term of the permit. We have to sample every outfall. How much it costs at the end of five years kind of depends on what we find. We start stuffing TV cameras and, and taking samples. Just from the outset, the base sampling, we're looking at probably twenty or thirty thousand if we don't find anything. But if we find anything and start chasing up the pipes, that just goes on top. You know, and that's just sampling, by the way. That's the administrative burden, the reporting. There is just no way, you know, Alex Cannon's been kind of handling this for us for the last five years. There's no way. It's too much for him to do, too much for him to track.
Yeah, I've seen this sort of thing before. EPA's pretty good at talking the talk. But when it comes down to walking the walk, and there, there's no funding coming from them, so it essentially becomes this gigantic unfunded mandate that is humongous burden on all of the states and municipalities in the country. I suspect you'll hear the talk change a little bit and soften a little bit. But we won't know until people start challenging it and doing it.
They, they address that. There's actually a whole paragraph in here where they describe chapter and verse, and they cite all these executive orders where this doesn't meet the test of an unfunded mandate. And those are the kind of things that I, you know, I think we forwarded around to you. I, I, we met with some attorneys. I really think it's in our best interest to get a really qualified, not only legal, but, but technical, you know, some consultants, to really make sure that the bow is tied together the way the bow is supposed to be tied together. Because I, I read this stuff, and it just twists my stomach up. I don't want to tell, I can't tell you that they're a hundred percent wrong. Because, you know, you, if you, if you try to really analyze what they say and think about it from a practical sense, like, yeah, I, I can see why they would want us to do that. But it's big change coming our way, huge change. It's not the way we've been doing business. It's not the way we're geared up to do business in the future. And some, somebody's got to foot the bill. And the way EPA and the state have put this together, it's a hundred percent on us and our taxpayers.
Seems a little bit unrealistic, don't you think?
Well, and here's, here's the kick, though, is, and this is what they'll say. It's not them. It's the Clean Water Act. The Clean Water Act is the most overarching, broad piece of legislation. It, and it says right in the Clean Water Act that you're not supposed to consider cost when you're talking about cleaning up the nation's waters. You know, I mean, that's right in there. So when, when that was done, keep in mind, when that Clean Water Act was put in is when rivers were on fire and, you know, our waterways were in real, real trouble. I'm not sure that back then, in the seventies, when President Nixon signed the Clean Water Act, I'm not so sure that they envisioned that we'd be having this conversation today, but here we are.
Yeah, and the Clean Water Act certainly has done a lot of good.
It has. It has.
If it wasn't for that, the Merrimack River wouldn't be swimmable and fishable like it is today. But there's often unintended consequences.
There is.
Perhaps is one huge example.
Yeah. And, and, you know, again, compared to other communities, we're in okay shape. We've got a chloride impairment, not a TMDL, a chloride impairment, and we have a bacteria TMDL. Manchester has, I think, all four TMDLs that are out there. They got all of them. You know, they're, they're staring down the barrels of probably hundreds of millions of dollars to comply with this, this permit. That's on top of all the CSO stuff that they've been doing the last several years. So it's, right now, we're in pretty good shape. Next permit cycle, who, who knows? Even if the next impaired waters list comes out before this thing gets finalized, we're, we could be in a whole different position.
But suffice it to say, it's complicated on a number of different levels.
It is very complicated. I'm sure all of you at one time or another have tried to read federal law mumbo jumbo, and it, it jumps from one chapter to another chapter to another chapter. And, and it's like this never-ending snake. I've lived with this thing for the last three weeks. And every time I read it, I find something new that I say, what? You know, and, and it just, somebody that really, really, really understands the law and the science needs to look at this stuff. And the coalition is putting that together. I sent you just to see at a draft of a coalition document. It's not the final final. I think the final final's coming shortly. But what that contemplated is, as many communities as, as were wanted to could join together and share the cost on a population basis or something like that, where it would be spread out amongst everybody. My recommendation would be that we pursue that and be a part of, and make sure that this is correct.
I want to thank you for being right on top of this, because I know you were one of the leaders in getting this coalition to address this.
Yeah, and I, and again, I've talked to EPA. I mean, they're very responsive. I've talked, DES has been very responsive. I don't want anybody to think that this is a, we're jumping right to court and we're suing everybody. It's, it's, this is big, big, big cost. It's a huge issue. I, I categorize this, certainly in my twenty-seven-year career, this is the largest single permit action I have ever seen or been a part of. And I lived through a super fun site. You know, so this, this pales what we went through with that super fun site. And, and we just, shame on us for not seeing it coming. You know, my, my wife was in California, and overnight, we've gone from laughing at California and saying, Jesus, it's amazing what they have to go through, and we're more stringent than them now. And that's just a, that's a tough pill to swallow overnight. It really is.
Board members, have any questions for Carl or comments or observations?
Keep us...
Keep us posted.
Yeah, keep us posted, Carl. Great job. I mean, I know there's a man hours in labor here.
So is that understanding, you're meeting with DES next week?
No, this, two days.
Two days, this week?
Yeah, Wednesday. And we're going to unfortunately have to move pretty quick. If this coalition is going to come together, five weeks, we, we got a one-month reprieve. But to have, you know, attorneys and consultants, get them on board, give them a chance to review all this stuff and get comments in. And by the way, the comments, the reason that this is so important, I'll just tell you this, too. The process as it goes today, EPA's required under law to, any permit action, put it out for review and comment. We comment. They address comments and revise their draft. They are not obligated to revise it again. Everybody can comment again. But as long as it takes for them to address those comments, they could turn this thing around. Our next step, if we're not happy with the, the final version of this permit, we have three choices. We can sign on with a notice of intent and just jump on board, and let's just get it done. We can file our own permit under the gun of a timeline. And you can see how comprehensive, these are not easy things to address. And in here, they spec out why they would allow somebody to do an individual permit. I don't think we would stand a chance. So I don't really see that as an option. The only other option is we appeal. We have thirty days to appeal the permit. The appeal is limited to whatever is in your comments. So it's absolutely critical that any legal problems we see get well laid out in our comments in response to this draft, because that's the basis for appeal. So it's, I'm viewing this as absolutely critical that we do our homework right now over the next month, five weeks. Make sure we put in a good comment letter, because that's our only hope if there's a real law with this thing.
Carl, could you report back to us after your meeting with DES? Don't spend a lot of time. Invest your time with, with the permit. But if you just give us the highlights of how the meeting went?
Yes.
Next week, that'd be great.
I'd be happy to.
He won't be here, but you can do it in writing.
Send, send, yeah, just send, send some bullets along.
I'm going to have to send something around to the whole coalition group anyway.
Anything else for Carl? Thank you, Carl.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, we've got a little bit of time before our public hearings are scheduled for seven o'clock. So can we? Chief O'Brien, where, I saw him, where?
He stepped out for me.
How about if we move ahead to Town Administrator's Report, so we can just knock that off?
Your weekly meeting schedule that we have is EDC on Wednesday and Planning Board on Thursday. Phil should be back for that, so. Uh, consensus folder, manifest for the general fund, AP is four hundred fifty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars and eighty-one cents. Cable revolving fund for AP is two hundred and eight dollars and five cents. The payroll withholding for the general fund is a hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight dollars and ninety-two cents. And for the cable revolving fund payroll is four hundred and fifty-six dollars and sixty-six cents. You also have, is it still nine? We added one today, or ten employee status reports? But I, don't act on those. Let's take this out because you want your discussion with the chief first.
Yep, okay.
Um, and then you have a response to Mr. Johanna.
Motion to accept the consensus folders number one and three.
Think you have a motion to a second, that motion?
Second.
The second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? The motion carries four zero. We'll take up item eight B two later, later in the evening.
And in your correspondence folder, you have a letter from Cemetery Trustees regarding summer work schedule and a letter from Todd Land Use Consultants regarding surveying in the area of Seven Main Street and that they may be traveling on for others' property. Assesses recommendation, you have approval of two thousand twelve tax share abatements on map eight, lot sixty-two A, map nineteen, lot thirty-two. A denial of two thousand twelve tax share abatements for map two, lot three dash five, map four, lot eighty-seven dash five dash twenty-three dash eleven. Map four, lot thirty-one, and map nine, lot twenty-five dash five. He recommends approval of the land use change tax lien, lien release on map eight, lot seventeen. Approval of his veterans' tax credit on map fifteen, lot one nineteen A. Approval of elderly exemption on map six, lot seventeen B dash ninety-one. Approval of an intent of timber cut on map four, lot fifty-three B, and approval of multiple timber cuts on map seven, lot fifty-five, map ten, lots twenty-two A and twenty-seven. Motion's needed.
Move to accept.
You have a motion? You have a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
A second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Apo, opposed? Motion carries four zero.
Thank you. Uh, last week when discussing the CMAC grant, the board requested that, that the Highway Safety Committee be changed back to the CMAC Steering Committee to have more public, um, members on that committee. Uh, I assume that you would be following the procedures of your ad hoc committee that is in your rules of procedure. So if, if the board agrees with that, I, Carl and I will work on developing a charter for that committee and then posting the openings. Because people already saw our meeting and are already submitting their names. So I think we have to have a, follow our procedures for the.
It seemed to be appropriate course of action to me. Others?
Yep.
Something, yeah?
Okay, so we'll get that to you for your approval. Um, not in my packet, or not in your packet. Um, we had a request today. Um, the planning Pinnardville is doing a student art contest and, um, they would like to display the winning submissions of Plan Pinnardville Art Contest from May eighth through June eighth at Town Hall with your permission.
Sounds like a great idea.
Yep.
Worthwhile activity.
Okay. And, uh, last week you had asked for an estimate, or Selectmen Devans are asked for an estimate from Attorney Drescher on preparing a discharge of the resolution for Parsons Drive. He said about two and a half hours of work. And we can cut that down a bit if we provide and do the, um, research of all the current property owners on Parsons Drive. So that might cut it down a bit. So, um, it would, it would not exceed four hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
Again, it seems like a worthwhile expenditure to me.
Want a motion?
Yeah, I think we ought to take a motion on that since it is.
Motion to authorize the expenditure of, and I don't know if you can repeat the amount.
Four hundred and thirty-seven, not exceed four hundred and thirty-seven fifty.
To prepare the discharge of lien.
Okay, we have a motion, you have a second on the motion?
Second.
You have a second? Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero.
That's, that's all I had for public.
I just want, just to go back to the letter from the Cemetery Trustees, just so we can clarify, because I believe last week, when we made the motion. So the, the four-day work week would involve all of the public works employees with the exception of the supervisor of cemeteries and the seasonal workers.
In the cemetery.
In the cemetery.
That's the way I understood it.
Okay.
So I'll let Carl know that.
Yes. Um, it's about five minutes of, why don't we take a short break now and come back at seven o'clock sharp so we can start the public hearing? Okay, everyone, just to stretch our legs and prepare ourselves for the hearing? Good evening, folks. It's now seven PM, uh, April eighth, two thousand thirteen. We're now going to go into the public hearings that are, appear on our agenda. First, let me read the public notice for the hearings. In compliance with RSA forty-one, colon, fourteen, dash, B, the Board of Selectmen announced public hearings on three twenty-five thirteen and four eight thirteen at seven PM at Town Hall, sixteen Main Street, Goffstown, New Hampshire to accept public input on the proposed thirty mile per hour speed limit ordinance, the amended street excavation ordinance, and the street excavation rules and regulations. Copies of the proposed ordinances and regulations are available online at www.gofftown.com or in the town clerk's office. What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna take up the public hearing on the amended street excavation ordinance and the street excavation rules and regulations first. I think those would be fairly quick to dispatch with and we can get down to the ordinance on the townwide speed limit ordinance. Um, so at this point, I'm going to ask, uh, if there are any members of the audience who would like to come forward and speak to the amended street excavation ordinance or the street excavation rules and regulations. So do we need to, does any sort of a brief description of what these are all about?
Carl is here.
Is Carl, where? Oh, there he is. Thank you.
Very briefly, um, we've revised the, the format of our street open ordinance. The main gist of it is to put it in, uh, in, consistent with our, our new format for ordinances and to clarify and clearly give the Board of Selectmen, uh, an appellate right, which arguably was missing in the old ordinance. We had a hardship case that created a problem for us and quite frankly, didn't leave ourselves a way to really come in here to, uh, have a conversation with the board. Uh, at the same time, I've also proposed revamping the way that we look at a moratorium street. It used to just be a time base when we rebuilt the road. It was five years for a reclamation and three years for an overlay. I've proposed revamping that, similar to the way the town of Derry does it, which makes more sense to me, which is based on PCI since we have that data anyway. And if the road is seventy-five or better, which puts it in good condition in our database, then it should be protected. I've also proposed, and I know the board will have some discussion on this, but I've proposed instead of, uh, automatic overlay every time somebody has to cut a moratorium street, that they, in lieu of that, pay a fee that would feed into a fund that would give us a part of money besides taxpayers' dollars to fix those cuts in a, in a way that makes the most sense and is most cost-effective. I think that summarizes the changes that we've put forward.
Thank you, Carl. Are there any questions from board members before I open it up for public comment? None? Okay, at this point, I'll ask for anyone who may be interested in commenting on the amended street excavation ordinance and the street excavation rules and regulations to come forward if you'd like to be heard.
That's an easy one.
Okay, last call. Anyone who'd, who'd like to be heard on that, on these matters. Okay, I'll close that portion of the public hearing. Uh, and now, uh, we'll take, take up the matter of the proposed thirty mile per hour speed limit ordinance. Chief Solomon, you want to come forward and explain what this is before we take comment?
First, I'll provide a brief history. Um, since two thousand five, the Highway Safety Committee has met approximately nine times to deal with specifically with speed issues. Um, and more precisely, the townwide speed limit. Um, we've looked at several perspectives, safety, the uniformity in speed throughout town, and also from a financial cost savings. First, to address the safety issue, um, the way we identify safety in crashes is that there's a response time or reaction time prior to an accident, the total stopping or the stopping distance, and the combination of the speed you, or the distance you traveled during the reaction time, and then the actual physical stopping of your vehicle is the total stopping distance. And actually, the lower the speed, the shorter the stopping distance. Um, also the shorter distance you have for reaction time. With that, um, we looked at, um, at twenty-five miles an hour, your total stopping distance is approximately a hundred and four feet. At thirty miles an hour, it's a hundred and fourteen feet. Thirty-five miles an hour, it's a hundred and forty-one feet. At forty miles an hour, it's a hundred and seventy-two feet. And at forty-five miles an hour, it's two hundred and seven feet, total stopping distance. Within the state RSA's under New Hampshire two sixty-five sixty, which is the basic speed rules, there are no less than six or seven individual RSA's that identify what type of road you're gonna speed on, what you can speed on, what level you can go, et cetera. It's very convoluted for the civilian reading those things. And that's a concern of ours, that if we have a more uniform speed limit for the people posted at each entrance of town, that there's better information for them to make good, solid decisions as they come through town. Finally, it's a financial issue. Um, we have approximately three hundred and seventy-five roads in Goffstown. And a hundred and forty-four dollars per sign, or signs on each end of the road, comes out to about fifty-four thousand dollars in speed signs alone. In two thousand twelve, the sign budget was thirteen thousand dollars, thirteen thousand one hundred. During the last presentation, the townwide speed limit to the board, there were concerns of slowing traffic on already congested commuter routes. Highway Safety looked at these routes and worked on a compromise to increase major commuter routes to thirty-five instead of the generic thirty. To post each of the entrances in town with a townwide speed limit would require, and between myself and Kyle Querum, approximately fifty signs at a cost of about seventy-two hundred dollars. In addition to that, to post the exempted streets that are thirty-five or forty would be an additional three thousand one hundred and sixty-eight dollars. The total number of roads at the speed would decrease in town is thirty-eight. The total number of roads at the speed would increase is twelve. And the total number of streets that would remain the same are two hundred and sixty-five. The remaining roads in town are private. The roads affected would be a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit on Center Street between Tibbetts Hill Road and Terrell Hill Road. A twenty-five mile an hour speed limit on Main Street between High and Mountain. A twenty-five mile an hour speed limit on South Mass between Mountain Road and Park Lane. A thirty-five mile an hour speed limit on Goffstown Back Road between Jason Drive and the Manchester City Line. A speed limit of thirty-five on Wallace Road between Stacy Lane and the Bedford Town Line. A speed limit on Shirley Hill Road between one fourteen and Wallace Road of thirty-five miles an hour. a speed limit on Shirley Hill Road between 114 and Wallace Road of 35 miles an hour, a 35 mile an hour speed limit on Tibbetts from Lauren Lane to Blackbrook Road, and a 35 mile an hour speed limit on East Dunbarton Road from Blackbrook to Dunbarton Town Line, and a speed limit of 35 on Terrell Hill Road between Center Street and Montalona. The other towns with the exception of State Highway would be 30 miles an hour. The state controls 114, the bypass, et cetera.
Okay. Are there any questions from board members before we open up the public comment?
Sure, if we could.
Yes, Jim, please.
Just a couple of questions. Chief, I have a, this is one that I had saved. I have a, a traffic study that was performed by the police department back in 2008 on Merrill Road. And based on that study, there was a recommendation made to the Board of Selectmen to reduce the speed from 35 to 25. Has there been a traffic study performed that makes the recommendation on that road that it should go from 25 back to 35?
No.
Could we do a traffic study or an engineering study for Acorn Drive?
Acorn Drive, not that I'm aware of.
Addison Road?
Addison Road, I know we've done them. I have probably 300 to 400 traffic studies over the course of the years. So we've done traffic studies on many of the roads. I don't have every one of them here.
And the reason I ask, there, you, you talk about the various RSAs. RSA 265-63, alteration of limits. And that requires that before any local jurisdiction changes the speed on a road, an engineering or traffic study must be performed.
Correct.
So on all the roads that we've changed or proposed to change the speed limits, we've had traffic studies performed? That recommend a lowering of speed?
I can't say that one way or another.
Because the result of that is if we were to post a lower speed limit on a road that we did not do a traffic study on, that it would be legal to enforce that lower speed limit?
Correct.
So that's an observation, something we'd be looking for.
That's correct.
This information during our deliberations, chief. So if we could do some research into that, get back to us with the answer, that would help us. Questions or comments from other board members before we open it up to the public? Okay, at this point in time, we're going to open up the public hearing to members of the public who'd like to comment on this proposed ordinance. There is a sign-up sheet. There are a number of names on here. I don't know if you all intended to sign up because you wished to speak or just wanted to sign up. I'm going to assume you signed up because you wanted to speak. So I'll go down through this list to begin with, and then I'll ask for others who may want to speak who aren't, or are on this list. I would ask that when you provide comment, you be as succinct and specific as possible. That'll help us with our deliberations. You know, the more specific feedback we get from you folks, the better, the easier it makes us to deliberate and come, to arrive at some sort of a decision on, on these changes in the ordinance. So that would be most helpful. If some, if you're speaking for a group, that's fine. Just let us know what group you're speaking for. If somebody before you has already made comments and your comments are the same, you can simply reflect that and, and help, help us move things along. Those, those sort of ground rules will be helpful. So with that in mind, I'm going to call the first person who's on the list, and that is John Heikel. And if you'd come forward, please, take a seat at the microphone. Give us your name and your address before you speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Board of Selectmen. Thank you, chief, for your presentation. My name is John Heikel. I live at 483 Mass Road. Also, one of the state representatives going through the budget system right now. We're dealing with the, with making another biennial budget. Well, we've made it. But I have some problems or some questions on this, that if the fines will be given to the town instead of the state, which is what they are normally now, I believe, how will this affect the budget that has been proposed by the House? That's going to the Senate. Will this give the state any shortfalls in creating any kind of voids for the state at this point? That's one of my concerns. But safety is above all else, and I trust the chief is doing the right job in his decision. Whether you agree with the speed limit changes or not, I'd also, but in my personal opinion, I don't support this as changing these speed limits. But I know that, that safety is paramount. But I'm real concerned about the budget, that the town starts receiving this money, which is in here, under penalties. If it's given to the town, it has never been in my, in my, that I know of. So I just want to make sure that we don't create a, a vacuum in the state budget that's going to have to be made up somewhere else through taxes or any other type of... That's all I had to say.
Thank you, Mr. Heikel. I can't promise you folks that we'll get answered all your questions. We'll make note of them, and we'll, we'll do our best to, to answer them unless we have an answer on this.
I can answer that one.
Okay, sure.
1982, when I started here, the town, in fact, got many of the fines. However, it went to a state court system. And currently, all speeding tickets, all motor vehicle summonses, go directly to the state, and the town sees very little of any of that revenue.
Correct.
Thank you, chief.
And this proposed ordinance doesn't change that?
It would be, we would continue our enforcement efforts, fair and reasonable.
All of, all of the fines collected going to the state?
Absolutely.
Next on the list, I have Heidi Bernier. Yep.
Mr. Chair, am I reading this wrong, then? Where it says that all fines collected shall be used, shall be for the use of the town? Am I reading that wrong?
No, that's what it says.
I'm not sure that can be changed. This is why I thought I'd say something.
Okay, we made note of that, Mr. Heikel. We'll, we'll get, we'll look into that. Thank you. Yes, Ms. Bernier.
Hi.
Good evening.
Heidi Bernier. I live at 58 Lynchville Park Road. I do have some concerns with raising the speed limit in that area to 30. As many of you may know, the roads are, in that section, there's some hills. There's some sharp curves. On one section of the road where it is coming onto a hill by the curve, the road tends to be narrow. People come up the hill in the middle of the road when you're trying to go down. A year ago, I was almost forced off the road into, and I hit someone's mailbox with my side-view mirror. Because they're coming up the road, they're very, going very fast. Also, we have the rails, the rail trails crossing right there. Several times, I have seen people using the trail not stop before they cross the road, and they just drive their bike across with the speed of some of the vehicles coming on that road, and that being on the hill near a curve. I'm concerned that there could potentially be an accident. Several times, I have witnessed almost accidents at the corner of Lynchville Park and Bay Street, because there are yield signs there. People do not yield. Just last week, my husband went out to get the mail and was almost hit by a car. He did call the Goffstown Police to notify them. The car was going so fast, we couldn't get the license plate. Children coming home from school, they're dropped off at the bus at the top of Lynchville Park Road, and they walk down the street. I've often seen three and four children abreast in the road. And I'm concerned that someday, there could be an accident because people do tend to drive very fast on that section of road, especially with it being narrow, curvy, and hilly.
Okay, this map shows Lynchville Park as being at 30 mile an hour in accordance with this ordinance. What, what is it now?
At the top of the hill right bef, there's a hill and a curve. There's a sign that says 25 miles per hour.
Is that a speed limit sign or a recommended safe speed sign?
It, it is not. It's a 30 mile an hour zone. It's not a 25 zone. There's no ordinances. I've done research. There's no ordinances on Lynchville Park that would indicate or make it a 25 mile an hour zone.
But are there signs there, do you know?
There may be a suggested sign, I believe.
There's a little difference between signs. There's a speed limit sign, and oftentimes, you'll see a suggest, what they call a suggested safe speed sign, which is not an enforceable speed limit. But I appreciate your comments. So you would support a 20?
25.
25 on Lynchville Park Road?
In that area, yes, for safety.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the list, I have Representative John Burt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and fine committee members. I am John Burt, 7 Bay Street, here in Goffstown. I do oppose this change, and I'll explain why. I personally feel, and I have lived it, one size does not fit all. It just does not work. I owned a house in Sal, excuse me, I owned a house in Salisbury, Vermont. It's a small town, from 1980 to 1994. And it was approximately '88. I hope I don't offend anybody, but a bunch of flatlanders came up, and they became selectmen in our town. We only had three of them. So they said that they wanted us to enjoy the beauty of Salisbury and look at the Green Mountains over there. So they lowered all the speed limits to 30 miles an hour. It was a disaster. What ended up happening is, like the chief said, or somebody said, you had to end up getting a engineer study done. The engineer study came back, you know, speed limit 25 here, 40 here, 45. You know, again, it just doesn't fit one size. They ended up eventually, it took them several years, but they ended up doing away with it. And they went back to, you know, what the state was saying that these roads are really designed for. And then also, how many houses, like down in Danus Park, Lynchfield Park, you know, those small streets, they would say, you know, 30 miles an hour just doesn't work. So that was a big concern of mine, is why we're doing that. Also, as stated in here, and until I see it changed, I'm going to believe that this is the case. But I thought all fines did go to the state. But it does say, under penalties, Section 7, all fines collected shall be used for the use of the town. That concerns me because that could be, you know, a huge reason why this is being brought forward, to have more speeding tickets. The other thing that concerns me is with more speeding tickets, would be more overtime when people decide to, you know, fight these tickets. Because if there is not an engineer study done, then people are going to fight them. And of course, there's going to be huge overtime in our overtime budget. The other thing that kind of, you know, I'm not sure where I'm at on this, you know, especially if I'm one of the mayes. But it says the town may, and shall, you have to do. May, you don't have to. May is, you know, if you feel like it. The town shall, may enforce the maximum penalty allowed. And the enforcement authority may issue a ticket. So again, if I'm on the may side, I guess I'd be pretty happy if I was doing 5 miles an hour over. But if I'm not, I'm going to be thinking, well, somebody else is getting away with it. So I, I would have to look at that. And also, I served three years, just finishing up, on the Budget Committee. My first term was 2010. And if I recall right, Carl came before us. It was 2010 or 2011, I can't remember which year. But he said they needed all new signs. And I'm not exactly sure if we appropriated that budget, but I almost think we did. And he said it was to meet the federal, you know, guidelines. Later, I checked into that, and that was another may. You know, as the signs got old, they would like the new updated. But the way it was presented, if I recall right, to the Budget Committee was, it was a shall. So I'm thinking, well, there's money already being spent, or they've collected the money for the signs already. And, you know, I, I just think that we should just stick with what we have, go state by, not state by state, go road by road, on, you know, safety and the issue of the day. I just think that this one-size-fits-all is just going to be a disaster for us. It just concerns me that, you know, the citizens are going to get wrapped up into this. And I really feel the police aren't here to, you know, ticket the citizens of Goffstown for a small infraction. For example, you go over on Montalona Road, I think if I read this right, I'm not even sure what the speed limit is over on Montalona Road. My brother-in-law lives over there, but I go over there, and it's a fairly flat road. And, you know, there's a couple of curbs, but, you know, it's easy to do 35 miles an hour on that road. You know, the houses are far apart, and there's a lot of parts of town like that. And I think that's another concern, is, you know, if it's 35 or 40, then, you know, people are going to travel at the appropriate speed is. Thank you.
Thank you. We've, we've heard the concerns relative to requirement for engineering studies and where do the dollars go. We'll certainly look into those as our starting point. So thank you for your comments.
And I don't think engineer studies are free, from what I understand. I mean, they...
I don't know, any engineers will work for free.
No, no, unfortunately, they cost money. And if we, you know, if, if we start having, you know, everybody getting tickets on every road, you know, I know I'm going to challenge it. I'm going to request the engineer study, and if it isn't a state engineer study, I'm going to court. And again, that's overtime. You know, I can just see the budget going down pretty quick on that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have, is it Joy Bolton, Bolter?
My name is Joy Bolter. I live at 47 Merrill Road. And my concern is the need to change that to 30 miles an hour. If the study did indeed was done and said that recommendation was it should be 25, it is now 25, and it has signage for 25. What is the safety, how is safety being improved by upping it to 30?
It, it's all...
Yeah, let's, we're going to have a exchange, a question-answer exchange. We want to accept your, your comments and your testimony. We'll make note of it, and we'll make sure that we get those addressed for you.
And my, and my other concern is that this is a not-unstandard width road. And in the winter, there is no, nowhere to go. And if two trucks come down, if you're not agile enough to jump into a snowbank, there is nowhere for you to go. We've all lost mailbox and had dented mailboxes all seasons of the year. We've had animals that have been hit that are very fast, like a fox and a, and a fisher cat have been hit in the, in the morning hours in that traffic that we have. You know, I, I have great concerns that it's just a matter of time before somebody gets hurt. Because as you know, when you just ticketed some people on the road, they're amazed that they're being stopped doing 37 miles an hour. They said, I heard this woman say, but I was only doing 37, but it's signed 25. So if, you know, she was thinking, well, I'm under 40, so that's good. And this is a very narrow, steep hill, dangerous road that I'm hoping will stay 25 miles an hour. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, I actually have two names, Janet and Jim Coughlin. Does one or both wish to speak? Okay.
I'm Janet Coughlin. I live at 67 Merrill Road. And I think you probably all read my email. But a lot of what my sister just said, I, I want to ditto. But we went, it took us a year of going to meetings and everything to get the speed limit to 25. And it was, I can't remember the exact date, but it was right after the road had been redone for drainage. And so you have these six or seven-inch berms on either side, asphalted berms. And then, so there's no, there's no sidewalk. There's no little area where you can be off the pavement unless you're up on the, on the side of the hill on one side, or, or whatever. And we, we went through the whole process... And we went through the whole process. And I just think it is ridiculous to have to go through that same process over again when nothing has changed. It is still a scenic road, there are no sidewalks, you have the berms. So when they plow in the winter, I was almost hit getting my morning paper when two trucks came and they hit the mailbox, I had to jump out of the way. Did they stop? No, they didn't. We've had animals that have been hit during the rush hour, which is between seven and eight. It is still a cut-through road, more so now because we were discovered when they did the roundabout at Wallace, and they rooted the traffic up and around. Before that, we really didn't have too much trouble. Now we're discovered, so people avoid the roundabout at Wallace by going up mountain, crossing over, going down Worthley. They have to go through three or four stop signs. Then they can go up Wallace and a little bit faster than they can going through town. So the safety issue, but just the fact that we went through that whole process less than five years ago, and we would have to go through it all over again. To me, I would rather see the twenty-five miles stay. The other, I think I agree that the one-size-fits-all comment from Representative Burt, I'm feeling along that same line. And I also think, I was listening to the Euro meeting last week, I think, when Mr. Campisano said that he felt since it was going to affect everybody in the whole town, that maybe it should be a town-wide vote. I would prefer that it just stay the way it is, and we've already bought the signs that are there. And we've been told that even though it's twenty-five, you actually can go forty before they like to ticket you. I think they might give you a warning before that. So if you move it to thirty, it'll be even faster. And some parts of the road are wide, some parts are narrow. It's, I think it's very unsafe to move it up to thirty again. But thank you for your time.
One question for you. We do have a copy of your email, written testimony. What you just said seems to capture the essence of it.
Pretty much, yeah.
With your permission, we won't read this into the record, but we will incorporate it in the record.
Okay, thank you.
Is that, is that acceptable?
Excellent.
Okay. Thank you very much, your testimony.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we have James Butcher.
Hi, I live at thirty-five Mountain Road. So I actually am close to Merrill Road and Main Street in Goffstown, which are two of the affected roads. And I'm against this proposed ordinance, especially on Merrill Road. I feel like it's so narrow and halfway up. There's actually a crest in the road, so it's hard to see if there's something else coming on the other side. And if two cars are, you know, going at, you know, thirty-five, forty miles per hour, like they would most likely be going if the speed limit was raised, it's just a safety issue. And I walk on that road a lot, too. And, you know, I walk my dog on that road, and I just don't think it would be safe for me. And, you know, conversely, in the center of town on Main Street, I think that should stay how it is at thirty. Because that's a wide-up, wide-up, open enough space that people are able to see if there's any dangers, if there's, you know, any pedestrians, and they're able to, you know, adjust accordingly, and, you know, use their own judgment responsibility, and, you know, maybe drive a little bit below the posted limit when, you know, it's really busy in town, as opposed to, you know, around like seven, eight o'clock, it basically dies down, and there's almost, you know, no traffic, no pedestrians. And, you know, I'd hate to see a scenario in the future where people are constantly getting ticketed on that main stretch of town. And our small businesses in Goffstown would possibly, you know, see an effect from that when people try to avoid the main road the best they can. I mean, I would hate to see something like that happen. And also, in regards to the lack of a traffic engineer study, I mean, I wouldn't want this law to get passed unless it was really in the best interest of safety. I just wouldn't want another unnecessary, you know, reactionary kind of arbitrary law pulled from the, pulled from the air. I mean, how many accidents occurred on Main Street where speed was actually a factor? And do we know if by lowering the speed limit five miles per hour, is that going to affect the rate of incidents? Is the rate of incidents already unusually high on that road? It's just, you know, a couple of questions that I would want to have to be considered before this came to a vote. And I think, you know, if the ordinance is truly going to improve public safety, then the numbers would probably back up that theory. But, you know, right now, I think it's a little inexpedient to be writing any kind of legislation until we have, you know, proper studies that are set forth, so. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Kathy Coughlin.
I live at eighty-three New Boston Road. I'm against this ordinance in most parts. I do agree with making the downtown area, Main Street, twenty-five. More from, even though there's sidewalks and things, the traffic comes up very fast up over, especially up over the hill. They, you know, I think people know, okay, I went slow through town, kind of, and then they start going really fast going around. But I don't agree with keeping it twenty-five all the way up past the second entrance to the high school. It just, that seems a little excessive for that whole zone to be twenty-five, whether that's trying to slow it down because of the roundabout that's there. And, you know, all my other family lives on Merrill Road, so I agree with, they went through quite the battle to get that road twenty-five. Traffic still drives very fast on it. And I just think that would get worse by making it go back up. Because unfortunately, realistically, people go over the speed limit, so, and I go up there a lot, so. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. If I can back up, we had Janet and Jim Coughlin. Janet testified. Does Jim Coughlin want to testify?
No, she didn't actually.
All righty. Good answer. Next on the list, I have Andrew Phillips.
I have no comment. I didn't need to put my name down there.
Okay, thank you very much. Next is Mike Pelletier.
Hi, good evening. Mike Pelletier. I live at fifteen Tyler Drive. And I'm not sure where to start, so I made some notes. I'm strongly against this ordinance. From my experience living on Tyler Drive, it's a third of a mile west of the high school. If you've never been there, it's about a quarter mile long. There's thirty-three houses on it, one of the most dense neighborhoods we have in the town. It's a dead end, it's a cul-de-sac. The speed limit there is thirty miles an hour. I guess we would try to get it to twenty-five. We failed in the past. I guess that's to promote a safer and more orderly flow of traffic and safety for pedestrians, cyclists, and others. That's not, that's ludicrous. But I can tell from my experience on Tyler Drive, I was president of the association there for three years. The biggest concern we had was traffic going. And I'm not going to go into psychology of speed limits, but you know, when it's posted thirty, you know how fast you really drive. We have about a dozen children at the age of ten years old. Our main concern was not if, but when, one of them was going to get run over. It was only through the vigilance of the association, working with the police department, that we were able to avoid that situation. So I come here with experience on this, and seeing residential neighborhoods that are currently twenty-five, lucky they are now, to be raised to thirty. These are not through traffic areas, these are residential neighborhoods. And the reason they raise to thirty miles an hour from twenty-five is to promote a safer and more orderly flow of traffic, safety of pedestrians, cyclists, and others. You don't need a ten thousand dollar traffic study to know that if it's at twenty-five miles an hour in a residential neighborhood, and you raise it to thirty miles an hour, it's not going to be safer. Would certainly hope that we're not going to waste any money or time or effort on that type of argument. We all know that's not true. But if we need to do that, and this ordinance does get voted through, I, like most of us have, we're busy people. But I will take the time, effort, and resources, not only to have that ordinance repealed, but to have something put in place that actually does promote safer and more orderly flow of traffic and safety of pedestrians and cyclists and others. So I ask you to reject this ordinance and maybe consider a new proposal that actually will do what the purpose of this ordinance is intending to do, which this piece of paper here does not do at all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, I have Michelle Redfern.
Hi, I'm Michelle Redfern. I live at one forty-six Peppermint Street. I oppose this incre- oppose this increase, yes. I have three small children. Our neighborhood probably has forty-plus children. Right now, it's twenty-five, and I believe it should stay twenty-five. There's a lot of curves on this road. Just really worried about the safety of the children. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Regina Smith.
Hi, my name's Regina Smith, and I live on fifteen Main Street, Goffstown. I oppose the speed limit change. And what I would like to see is more enforcement on the sidewalk crossing. It's very bad right up at the top of Main Street. And it's not just the people that go around you while you're in the crosswalk, but the police don't stop either, which is a problem. And it really affects me, and it affects my children, because they say, the police don't stop for you, Mom. So that's something that I think is more important and should be more enforced in town. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next on the list, I have Mike Smith. Mike Smith?
Yeah, my wife.
Okay, thank you. Jeff Day, please.
My name's Jeff Day. I live at nine sixty-four Back Mountain. And I just want to say I oppose this, simply put.
Okay, thank you very much. That indeed is succinct. How about Amy Day?
Hello.
Hey.
My name's Amy Day, and I live at nine sixty-four Back Mountain Road. I just wanted to express my opinion about how I feel these speed limits, what effect they have. I really question that they actually make people go slower. Somebody mentioned on Merrill, they had a little twenty-five speed. There's been studies showing people tend to drive at the speed, they feel comfortable on the road. So when we lower speed limits, all we do is increase ticketing. And the best way to decrease speeding and through traffic is to have better throughways, so people don't want to cut through and go around. So possibly increasing speeds on master road and other ways, and people won't want to go up and around because they have, they can feel comfortable going at faster speeds. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you. Next, I have Barbara Griffin.
Very exciting. My name is Barbara Griffin. I live at eighty-four Merrill Road. I wanted to speak against this ordinance, and I hope that the board does not adopt it. I want to say that I appreciate very much, though, when the chief says that since two thousand and five, he's met on this issue nine times. I know that there were lots of meetings on this issue before that time. This is a constant issue in this town, and it's brought to mind every time you go over roads into Bedford or Dunbarton, or even where, no, I don't think where, where you see the sign that says, "Speed limit thirty miles an hour unless otherwise marked." Because the general rule is, speed limits are thirty-five miles an hour. And our surrounding communities have generally speaking adopted the ordinance to bring it down to thirty, which I know brings a lot of people to the highway safety and police department and to town, saying, why aren't they thirty? So I really do appreciate that, that that is a constant battle in this town. I think there are some issues with the ordinance. I would say that my observation is, when you have this many people at a public hearing on an ordinance change, it's usually bad news for the ordinance. Usually, when you propose things and nobody thinks much about them, you're not going to have anybody at a public hearing. Even if I take my road away, there are still a lot of people here. And in regards to my road, I would just like to ditto the comments in regards to the history of the speed limit on that road. I was not involved in that process, but I know it occurred. I also would like to point out that I know, I live at eighty-four, I'm between the crest and Worthley Hill. So they've all revved up as they get to the crest, and they're all gunning as they come the other way, to the point where last weekend, I could look out my front window, and we said, oh, the police are down at that end today, because we can tell the reaction to the traffic pattern so clearly. It's been found as a cut-through. I'd just say the other reason for safety, I think it really needs to be kept on Merrill Road, is it's not just a cut-through to avoid Wallace Road or other things. High school kids use that road, which is the main source of traffic between seven and eight, and in the afternoon, between two and three-thirty. And I have talked to more than one New Boston parent who comments that Merrill Road is the road that they use to drop their kid off at school, and they always drive the speed limit when they talk to me. But if you look at the cars on Merrill Road at those times of day, they are high school students, cutting in and out of high school. They have the right to use the road, but it's generally not at twenty-five miles an hour. So I would be opposed to this change. Thank you.
Thank you. Next would be John Caprio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, selectman chief. I am opposing the increase townwide for safety reasons. But particularly, I'd like to speak about Tibbetts Hill Road, because that's where I reside, at one-six-nine. And I noticed that there are no selectmen that live on this road. So just let me tell you a few things about Tibbetts Hill Road. It's long, of course, it's hilly, and it's full of twists and turns. Shoulders are very narrow. In some cases, they're nonexistent. Most of the road is lined with tall trees or rock walls. There are a lot of blind driveways, and some of these driveways are in precarious positions. And these conditions, of course, get worse, or the risk of these conditions gets worse during the wintertime. There's been a lot of development on Tibbetts Hill Road over the last fourteen, fifteen years that I've lived there. And it is a popular shortcut between Goffstown and Dunbarton and Concord. And the school buses, several school buses ply the road in the morning and in the afternoon. The road already presents a risky speeding, risky speeding condition. There've been several accidents in front of my house or in close proximity. In one case, a driver coming down the hill field to negotiate a turn, came across my front lawn and smashed into the telephone pole in front of my driveway. In another case, another driver coming down the road, down the hill, failed to negotiate a turn and ran over my mailbox post. I've observed drivers on cell phones and texting, and it's not, it's very frequent that you see drivers cutting across the solid yellow line as they speed around the curves. I don't think that there is a compelling reason that I can see to raise the speed limit. Is it really important that drivers get to the bottom of Tibbetts Hill Road faster, only to wait in the queue to turn on the center street? I just think that this is going to enable people, or embolden people, to go faster. And maybe they'll feel better about themselves because they're not speeding quite so much. So for these reasons, I ask that you reconsider and not increase the speed limits. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll hear from Robbie Grady.
Thank you. I'm representing the Goffstown Main Street program this evening. And we are not going to speak to the ordinance as a whole, but specifically to the recommendation for the lowering of the speed limit on- but specifically to the recommendation for the lowering of the speed limit on Main Street. Back in two thousand and eight, we were part of the Village Planning Committee that reported to the Selectment at that time. We recommended many different traffic calming, uh, procedures that would improve safety along Main Street. And although we didn't specifically recommend a twenty-five speed limit, uh, lowering, I think we can all agree that that would be one thing that would help improve safety along Main Street. And safety for pedestrians, as well as bicyclists and, and drivers, is paramount for all of us. So, again, not speaking to the ordinance as a whole, but just to that portion of it that speaks to the twenty-five mile an hour. And I think from our point of view, we would actually extend that route further up North Mast and not just stop at High Street, but continue along the corner throughout the Village Commercial District. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, let's see, Al Baines.
Good evening. I'm Al Baines. I live at 21 Catamount Road. And I'm, in general, I support the ordinance, however it appears that there's work that needs to be done in reviewing additional streets to maintain lower speed limits. But I would like to speak, as Robbie has just done, to the speed limit on Main Street. And I encourage that, uh, the speed be lowered to twenty-five miles an hour. As some of you may know, I am an occasional crossing guard at Elm and Main Street, and, uh, literally take my life in my hands, uh, be, being a crossing guard at that intersection. And, um, if any of you would like to come out and stand at that o-- corner in the morning, uh, even standing on the sidewalk, it's, it appears to be dangerous. And particularly with the traffic that's heading, uh, north to go west, uh, they really come barreling through that intersection. And, um, I really would encourage the speed limit on Main Street to be lowered, um, to at least twenty-five, if not even twenty, uh, because we need to slow the traffic down, particularly at that intersection. I know there are some studies underway where some things may be done in the future to soften the traffic around that area. But we need to slow the traffic coming down into that area. And, uh, and we need to start back at Main Street. And as Robbie said, I think we need to take it back beyond, uh, the intersection of High Street, uh, even back to maybe where Church Street comes in, um, into, uh, North Mast Street. And, and bring that speed limit down, so we can slow that traffic down. Um, most of my duties when I'm a crossing guard there are directing traffic. Uh, it's a necessity if we are going to maintain some order with getting traffic cleared out of, uh, Elm Street, and so that the traffic coming out of Maple Ave, uh, can s-- can move smoothly and try to keep just the general, good flow of traffic there. I could give you a whole litany of names that I've been called, standing at that, at that corner, and, uh, various, uh, gestures that have been presented to me. So, uh, in general, I support the, the ordinance. Um, I think some more work needs to be done on it, but I definitely support reducing the speed limit on Main Street.
Thank you very much. That is the list of names that I have on the signup sheet. Are there others in the room who would like to be heard? I'm going to recognize in the far corner, and then we'll come over here.
Mr. Chair, as you know, I'm Alan Yaton. I live at 82 Hillcrest Road. It's not posted. People don't speed. There's no accidents. But I got plenty of dogs and kids, bicycles, you name it, on the street, at most times. And when they're not looking, they play basketball. Because they move it on the street and back out again. So, I honestly don't see the problem. I served on a planning board for six years and never saw an issue ever raised about speed on town roads. Never once. I've bounced around this town on every road during my course of serving on a planning board, and I've, and I've seen a few problems, such as people passing on the solid yellow line on Henry Bridge Road the other morning, passing a FedEx truck. I was going down the hill. So there's always going to be those occasional people that can't obey the system, period. And those are the ones we need to take care of. I have a teenage son, I hope, never gets visited by the Police Department. Um, he's been forewarned. I have a second one coming up, and I, I suspect he'll, he'll receive the same treatment. If you drive around town, what's the biggest thing you see in town right now, today? On the road, when you drive around? The rubber on the road. I drive Locust Hill Road, and I bet there's, every night, there's somebody out there messing around on the roads. I don't know what you do about it. But they're there. I don't know how to educate people. Pedestrians, bicycles, runners, you name it. We even got horses up on Page Hill Road. There's occasional on the road. There are occasional on the road on Locust Hill Road. I think for the most part, the majority of people respect that issue. I would say ninety-five percent of the people respect that issue, whether it be speed, whether it be pedestrians, whether it be safety. The occasional infraction, we have a police department. I think they do a good job. But the, as everybody says, they can always do better, because it's the occasional person that you don't see that's doing something in town that makes people angry. And that's what you're hearing here tonight. You know, when the development was proposed up on, uh, by Merrill Road, we heard all the residents about speed and traffic. So the changing traffic patterns in this town need to be addressed, because they are changing, whether it be Merrill Road, whether it be Main Street. I have no problem with addressing those issues on an issue-by-issue basis. And I think that's what you need to do. When problems arise, you need to address it. In terms of a planning goal, I think, how do you educate the public? Well, is thirty miles an hour too slow? Ask a teenager, "Is thirty miles too slow?" The answer is yes. Ask Pepe here, "Is thirty miles an hour too slow?" If you ask my wife, she drives it already. So I'm on the other end of the spectrum. I expect someday that, that occasionally, um, I'll be close. But I've lived in town for thirteen years, and I've never seen an accident on the roads in this town. I can't say I haven't heard people, seen people pass, speed by me on Page Hill Road, on that double yellow line to pass up by the, the farm. What do you do with that? Hopefully, they report those kind of instances to the Police Department, and then maybe some action can be taken. Most of the time, I'm too blind to see the numbers on the license plate, to be quite honest with you, because they're either going so fast, or my eyesight is failing me. I'm seventy years old. But anyways, needless to say, I'm not in favor of messing with the speed limit in this town. I'm in favor of addressing it when the issues arise. I have no problem with that. I have no problem authorizing a committee from the Selectment to make that decision for us. Townwide, I, I just don't support, from a planning issue, from a safety issue. Haven't heard one statement about, and I don't know, and I don't want to speak for the Police Department, how many pedestrians have been hit in the last ten years in this town? How many people on bicycles? How many people walking? Have actually been injured by a vehicle on the road attributed to speed. Now, that doesn't take out the fact that people walking the crosswalks hilly, willy-nilly. But honestly, how many pedestrians have been hit? I read the newspaper every week. I very seldom see anything like that. In all the planning projects we've had, I've never seen anybody talk about in a public hearing about pedestrians, bicycle, or people. Not once. On the roads that we've approved, the projects we've approved in this town. Now, safety issues alone come up and are addressed. I mean, if you take the Y, the Alert Center, now has a flashing light on it. We were sworn to by the engineer at the time that there was not going to be any traffic issue there. That's not the case. I'll bet there's been accidents at that pullout at the Y. I haven't seen them, but I'll bet there has been. And it's because people either going too fast, or people, sight distance is lousy. I'll grant that, but there's no, but it's been addressed with a flashing light. At least there's something there to forewarn people there that something's going on. Didn't change the speed limit. Now, going up Locust Hill Road, there's a speed limit at thirty miles an hour. I know why it's there, because someone complained about the speed on Locust Hill Road to a committee, and it was changed. I've seen evidence of people driving off the road there, especially on the curves, upper hill, on the upper Locust Road, in the winter time. People go too fast for the, for the conditions. So I'm not so sure that, that, how that plays out. So anyways, I'm not in favor of it. I think there's, there's a committee. I think you need to address the issues as they arise and not do a overall blanket approach. It's not going to work. Thank you.
Thank you. I saw a hand on the right, near the back somewhere. Yes.
My name is Paula Bedard. I live at 36 Shirley Park Road. And I'm on the Board of Directors for the Goffstown Rail Trail. I also volunteer with the statewide biking and walking advocacy group, Bike Walk Alliance of New Hampshire. But I'm really here just as a citizen of Goffstown and as someone who is an avid walker, an avid bicyclist, uh, road user. So I'd like to say that I am very much in support of any of the lowering of the speed limits. I think that's always a good thing, especially as someone who uses the roads a lot for bicycling. Uh, that's just music to my ears. I think that's definitely going to improve the safety of people biking and walking on our roads, because as you know, our roads are not used just for driving cars. Um, I also think that lowering speed limits will encourage people and make them feel more comfortable using our roads for biking and walking. And I think that's an important point to consider, so I appreciate the lowering of speed limits. I'm very much opposed to any of the, uh, proposals to raise speed limits, right? So I'm against those. Especially, uh, in the situation where, um, I'm in support of the fact that, uh, right now on South Mast Street, uh, I believe it's twenty-five, that section. You know, it's near the high school.
It's thirty.
Okay.
Suggested for the roundabout.
Okay. The other point I wanted to bring up is East Union, because that road is actually a connection point for two points of the rail trail. East Union Street is the street that, um, people who are using the rail trail have to use that street to connect from one section of the rail trail to the other. So, um, you should expect that there would be more bicycling and walking traffic on East Union, perhaps, than other streets, because people will be using the rail trail. So, um, if, you know, you may inadvertently create, right now, it's thirty on East Union. And I would propose that East Union be lowered to twenty-five to reduce the incentive for people to use East Union as a cutoff to, you know, skip through sections of South Mast. So I wouldn't like to see that. And I, you know, I use that road a lot, because I live so close to there, and I do see people trying to use that road as a cutoff to get ahead, and, um, it's very dangerous. Also, as a bicyclist, I want to point out that a lot of people are just not aware of the three-foot rule, which is the rule that drivers are really required to leave at least three feet of space between the bicyclist and, uh, themselves. And as the speed limit increases to forty or fifty, they're required to add another foot. So at forty miles an hour, the car is required to stay four feet away from a cyclist. And, um, that's primarily because of, like, a wind gust issue with cars traveling that fast alongside bicyclists. I also want to speak to the issue of Merrill Road. My husband and I walk on Merrill Road frequently, and I'm not in favor of raising the speed limit on Merrill Road. It's one of the most beautiful roads in Goffstown, and, um, we enjoy walking on it. I would not like to see that raised to thirty. Another person pointed out the issue of when a road is curvy and windy and hilly. Though, that creates really dangerous situations for bicyclists and walkers, because they just, they don't see you. You could be right where you're supposed to be, but if they're speeding, um, it, you know, it makes for a, um, much less safe situation the higher the speed limit. Any of the areas where there's a rail trail crossing, so the Lynchville Park area, you know, I have concerns about the speed limits there. I'd like to see those as low as possible. I, I like to think that our community is going to become more of a walking and biking community. So I really appreciate people considering lowering speed limits. I think it's an important, um, aspect to consider for our community, to make people more enthusiastic about those methods of, uh, transportation. I think that's it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard? Anyone at all? Seeing none, everyone who wishes to be heard has been heard tonight. I'm going to close the public hearing. I'd like to thank you all for taking the time to come down here and share your comments and concerns with us. It'll be valuable to us as we deliberate on this. It was one of the biggest crowds I've ever seen at a Board of Selectmen's meeting, so I appreciate that. And we will consider your comments as we deliberate. Thank you all very much. You ready?
I'm going to pass it, right? About you?
Two weeks.
Yeah, I didn't bring, I didn't bring Easter candy this week.
It's finally gone.
What should people, people in a meeting like that?
Yeah.
Could we change thirty to twenty-five? I don't like.
Twenty knows and...
That would be the chairman's decision?
Sure, come on in, have a seat. Um, we did close the public hearing, so we'll, we'll take fairly detailed notes on your comments, so we can enter them into the record that way, okay? If you just tell us your name and address to start, that'd be helpful.
I'm Nicola Point, 45 Merrill.
Yes.
And my concern is that if you upgrade the speed limit, because it's across the street between where the high school students tend to drive to get to school. Um, I have three small children. One of them is autistic.
Hold on just a second. We have a little trouble hearing with the eating noise.
And the youngest is autistic, and he is registered with, uh, Police Department. It's just dangerous. And as of next year, uh, the older two children won't be waiting anymore at the bus with him. So, he'll wait on that, you know, up, at the top of that street. Not alone, because I'll probably have to go with him, but it just poses a danger. And he's young, and they drive really, really fast. A lot of them are young kids, you know? That's my main concern. I mean, my kids don't really play on the street, because it's really dangerous, actually. They don't even ride bikes, because I'm afraid that they travel so fast on that road, and they're going to get hurt. I think if the, the speed limit goes up, I don't think it's going to get better. That's my main concern, is the kids.
Well, thank you for taking the time to come down here and share your concerns with us. We'll make sure they get into the record for our deliberations.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate it. Sorry, I couldn't find the town hall. I went over to the other building across the street. I'm totally embarrassed to say.
That's okay. Thank you.
Just as a, as a procedural issue, um, the State RSA clearly requires...
Alan, would you mind grabbing that door and shutting it for me?
The State RSA clearly requires a, an engineering or a traffic study for every road before you reduce its, or increase, either way. I think for the sake of the legality of the ordinance, if the chief could put a list together of all of the roads that are having speeds either increased or decreased, and then get the attached traffic study for those roads.
That would support that.
If there are roads that do not have an associated traffic report, I think that puts the entire ordinance into jeopardy as it is. You can't pass a townwide speed limit, including roads that are not.
I think that's an important issue, and the first thing that we need to grapple with and, and address when we deliberate on this. I don't know if we're going to get to that tonight, but certainly that's one of the first things we need to look at.
But I guess my point is, if there, I don't, I don't believe we would be deliberating on an ordinance that is not... But I guess my point is, if there, I don't, I don't believe we would be deliberating on an ordinance that is not legal. In other words, a townwide ordinance encompasses all of the roads. If not all of the roads can legally have their speed limits changed, that makes the ordinance a moot point. So I think at that point, we wouldn't have to deliberate, we could not go forward with it. It would not be legally enforceable.
Okay, I guess, yeah. Would you consider deliberations, I mean, if we're asked, I think we asked the chief, specifically, to bring forward evidence of, did, did we not, when the question was raised?
We asked him for a list of the streets that would be impacted by either increasing or decreasing the speed limit.
Whether or not there was a report.
We, I don't think we asked.
No, I was just asking him, I know, like, for one or two of them, he said, no, there were not reports. But he did say that there were.
I was hoping you wasn't, you weren't gonna go down through that.
No, I was not.
I looked over and said, wow.
This is just a fraction of the, of the roads, but no.
But certainly that's the first issue that we need to, to grapple with, so.
Twenty-two people that spoke here tonight, you've got twenty no's against it, and one is on the fence, it's just from Main Street.
Well, do we want to deliberate on this after we get through tonight's agenda, do we want to deliberate on this tonight, or do we need some time to...
We can't make, we can't deliberate for two weeks legally, we could discuss.
Oh, that's right, yeah, you're right, we can't.
Under the RSA.
Yeah, that's right, we've gotta provide the required time. Well, let's get through the rest of the agenda.
So you, you would like me though to ask the chief if a traffic or engineering study has been done on all the roads impacted by this proposed ordinance?
Yes.
We should have, we should be able to electronically, I mean, we have... I, I went through, since two thousand and six, all of the minutes for the Highway Traffic Safety Committee. And there were numerous traffic studies, they were all attached to our minutes. Some of them, the recommendation was, yes, we should lower, some of them, the recommendation was, no, it's, people aren't speeding. But for all of the roads that are being either reduced or increased, there should be a traffic study that can be produced.
So we need that information available to us.
Please don't have the police officers going out between now and then doing traffic studies.
What if another organization did a traffic study? Like Southern Hampshire Planning Commission, they do traffic studies all the time.
Do we have?
But they probably, and it probably wasn't for that specific purpose.
Traffic or engineering study that demonstrates the speed needs to increase or decrease. The state doesn't require that you hire outside consultants, as long as you have internal staff that can do that, but they are looking for an actual study.
The statute, I don't have it, Nick, does it specify the parameters of the study, or what, should go into the study?
Does whenever local authorities in their respective jurisdictions determine on the basis of an engineering or traffic investigation, that the prima facie speed permitted under this chapter is greater or less than? And then it goes on how they can change it. But the traffic or engineering investigation has to be the basis for why you're increasing.
But there's nothing in the statute that gives guidance as to what that study should encompass.
And so the board doesn't think any traffic study should be done now, in the next two weeks before you deliberate?
It wouldn't be enough time to have that done, I don't...
Plus, I mean, we've put two years or three years into this proposed ordinance, staff time that may or not even pass. I really don't wanna see any more town resources put towards this.
That would be improper.
Okay, anything else before we move on, who want to get back onto the agenda? Let's back up to item seven, which is Chief O'Brien. You're gonna talk tonight about the performance pay matrix and the grant?
Yes, good evening.
Sounds, seems like our noise has died down, can we just open one door so people think?
Well, it's just something...
No, we're not in a public...
Not in public. Okay, I believe in your packet, you've received some, some information as your request from last week's meeting. And in reviewing our internal regulation, or administrative regulation regarding call pay. Or the call pay incentive pay program. Realizing that the term pay matrix implies that, that it's a step increase process. Where in fact, it's a performance-based pay, pay scale. Where... It's more of a performance-based pay scale, and members of the department are placed in that, in that pay, pay scale. According to their performance, satisfactory performance levels or certification. And so in your packets, you have an adjusted of the internal regulation that reflects some of the terminology changes, to make that clear. And also included, just for clarification, you could see there is a, a list of all the existing call, call members, and their, and their rates. And you'll see that approximately half of them are still on the old pay scale. And six of them are pretty much, their position exceeds the current, the current pay scale. And just for reference, I included the, that previous call pay, pay scale. And you could see how, how extensive and sometimes confusing it could be in regards to that. But I'd be happy to answer any questions if you, if you have any, to get through this. But my recommendation at this point is to, to continue with our existing call member pay incentive program. And just call, call it what it is, is a performance-based pay scale. And as, as an employee gets bumped through that pay scale for satisfactory performance. It's called, you know, it's, it's an adjustment to their pay. And that's how they migrate through that pay, that pay scale.
Yes.
I, I met with the chief this week to just, to review this and go over and recollect what we were thinking back when, when this was originally passed. One of the things that this addressed was, in all, or in most pay scale systems that you have. Individuals typically move up, in many cases, based on longevity. If you're here for a year, you get a step, if you're here for the next year, you get a step. And it's, it's an increasing salary creep, based on nothing more than longevity. When the chief proposed this, the idea was to move away from that, because there were many call firefighters who were at extremely high salary rates, hourly rates. Who may or may not have been very active. So the idea was to do a number of things, one, put an incentive-based system in place. So that he encouraged the call firefighters to actually respond to calls, to make trainings, to be active within the department. But the other important thing was, it took individuals who had already gone above certain ranges, and it froze them. Year after year, they didn't move up simply because of longevity. They had to wait for the scale to catch up with them. So it accomplished another, a number of things, and it wasn't the pure step system that I think the board was thinking of when we froze steps. In some respects, I think this is kind of like a model salary matrix. Because it incentivizes activity and doing things for the department. It also limits that, that creep, when you reach the end of the scale, that's it. You know, if, if you're not happy with that, it's time to either get more certifications, it's time to look for another profession. But it's, you know, I think it does exactly what it set out to be, and I hate to see people now punished, because we put an end to a purely step system. Because it really is not that.
Are there other comments? I hear what you're saying, it makes sense to me. Are there other comments from other members of the board?
I just have a couple of questions, and chief, maybe you can revisit or refresh my memory, I'm looking at your, the pay scales itself. And I was just, when you came up with the different steps, and maybe in the future, or you can say why, I looked at, EMT, they make fifteen dollars an hour.
Correct.
And then, if you change and you become an EMT firefighter one, you get a fifty cent increase.
Correct.
If you're an EMTI, and you become a firefighter one EMTI. The only thing that's changed is that firefighter one, again. And that is a fifteen percent increase. If you, if you go through your EMTI, your EMT, and your paramedic, and you just substitute firefighter one, firefighter two, it's not the same increases.
You're absolutely right, and that's something that, this is obviously, it's not scientific, but what we looked at, what we looked at, the different certification attainments. Throughout either a firefighter, or through EMS or EMT, or paramedic. One of the things that we looked at is the number of contact hours that, that a person may have to, to take in order to get the certification. We're finding that a lot of the EMS-related certifications far exceeded the actual contact hours that, that a fire certification may entail. Again, it's not an exact science, but that was one of the things where we wanted to put more of an emphasis on the EMS end of it, because that's pretty much what we do.
I understand, if I can give you an example, I'm an EMT.
Correct.
Selectman Lemay is an EMTI, and you're a paramedic, just as an example. If that's all we had, I'm at fifteen dollars, Mark is at fifteen seventy-five, you're at sixteen seventy-five. The three of us all enroll in a firefighter one program.
Correct.
Same program, same number of hours.
Right.
I get a fifty percent, fifty cent raise. Mark gets a fifty, a fifty cent raise, you get a twenty-five cent raise.
I don't, I don't follow it.
Sixteen seventy-five to seventeen, same class.
Okay.
But the incentive is different. And that's all I'm saying, is maybe look at that to make sure all of those change, I, I recognize EMT, EMTI, paramedic are all different, and that's, you get that in their starting rate. But when you look at the firefighter one and firefighter two, those incentives are not the same across the board, and they should be.
Right, right. Yeah, we can, we can look at that, again, by the, by the, the benefit of this particular scale, it's, obviously, you, you scale to the certification. And as we, if we notice a certification that weighs more either by value in the community, or by value from the organization, or by the profession. We can adjust that. And you're right, it, it wasn't an exact science, but it was to show a progression down the line, as, as you get those certifications, it's weighted. And you're able, you're able to, to benefit from it.
So do some of these pay rates need to be revisited and adjusted around here?
And I'll leave that up to the chief to, to look at those, but...
We can look at that, especially what the one things that we're looking at is new, the advanced EMT, it's to replace the, ultimately, it's gonna be replaced the, what we call the EMT intermediate. And looking at the curriculum, it's, it's far exceeds the amount of contact hours and clinical hours from the old intermediate. So, well, it'll give us opportunity to examine all of them at the same time, and see where, see where it needs to be placed.
What designation was that again?
You have advanced EMT, which is taking over the EMT intermediate. And that won't, that's, that's in the transitional process right now, it's gonna take a few years.
Chairman, just for discussion or otherwise, I'll make a motion that we release the, or not have the step trees apply to the call firefighters' performance-based pay scale.
I won't second that one, somebody else is...
Motion on the floor?
I'll second it.
Second anybody? Is there any discussion on, on the motion that's on the floor?
Just to require, are you recusing yourself?
Um, yes, um, yeah.
I assume you're gonna abstain.
Yeah, I'm gonna abstain.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Vote aye as well. Opposed, abstentions? Okay, so the motion passes three, zero, one. Thank you.
Thank you. Chairman, the next item is, it's a bit good news, coming, coming to the fire department. We were awarded, last, officially awarded last Friday by, by FEMA for the Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program, the two thousand and twelve fiscal year grant program. We, if you recall, we actually applied, we have applied for three, three grants under, under that particular grant program in, in fiscal year two thousand and twelve. One was for a replacement forestry vehicle, another one was for a regional fire EMS CAD program for dispatch and equipment. And then lastly, was for a cardiac monitor and defibrillator unit. We got notified last Friday that we were, we were awarded the new cardiac monitor and defibrillator unit. For the federal share of, award of thirty-one thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars. Realizing that there's a five percent town share, or applicant share, of one thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars. With that, I'd like to present that to the board for further action.
The board cannot take action on accepting the grant at this time, because they have to have the required public hearing. And since they just got the dollar amount today, that public hearing cannot be next week, it'll be on the twenty-second, 'cause it has to be advertised in the newspaper seven days before. So it won't be till the twenty-second, is there any issue with the grantor on that?
We have thirty days to accept the grant, so with that, if we act quickly, promptly, that would do it.
Spend it quickly.
Well, we have to accept it, accept it quickly.
Accept and expend, right.
Yep. So to get the process, the product, process rolling, I would like approval from the board to go ahead and release a request for, for proposal, and start the, the bid, bid process. For two cardiac monitor and defibrillator units, and I'll, I'll tell you why. In the EMS budget that was passed, it included one cardiac monitor and defibrillator unit, because as our units are aging, we need, we need to start replacing them. So that was one of the, one of the things we wanted to do, is, is put one in the budget and, and hope, hope they pass. Here, we have an opportunity to purchase one through the budget, and we're purchasing one through the grant program. So that's why the RFP reflects two new cardiac monitor, monitor and defibrillator units for the fire department.
Okay, so we're looking for a motion to approve our RFP, get the RFP out, and then schedule us for the required public hearing on April twenty-second. There a motion to that effect?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, and a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Thank you.
Discussion, just quick questions, chief, you have in your budget the match?
We do have the, the match in our budget. Obviously, we have, we have what we call the, the medical equipment line, and that's where it would come from.
We currently have two units in service now?
We have, we have actually three units in service, 'cause there's one in each ambulance. And two of them are at that age, you know, where we need to replace them.
So two will be replaced, and two will replace...
If you notice in the RFP, it includes a trade-in. We may get some, some value out of it, but I don't anticipate much.
And I would, if I could just say, congratulations on the grant.
Thank you.
A lot of times, people don't realize the things that can get done through grants, and they don't have an impact on, on the budget, which is very helpful, so.
Good luck with the next two items.
Yeah, keep our fingers crossed.
So we have a motion, a second to put out the RFP and schedule a public hearing. Any further discussion, seeing no all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four, zero.
We taking a vote now on item two in the consensus fold of the employee status forms that were in there?
Motion to approve item two, employee status changes from the consensus fold.
A second on the motion?
I'll second it, sir.
We have a second. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief.
Thanks, chief.
I just didn't wanna initiate, that's all.
Okay, before we get back to Selectmen's discussion, I realized that there were a couple of emails or written comments that came in. that there were a couple of emails or written comments that came in relative to the townwide speed limit ordinance. So I am going to supplement the record by reading those into the record right now so that they're, they're on record. So I'm going to take a moment right now to read those two. The first one comes from Eric and Suzie Gray. They live on forty-seven Tyler Drive. And their email says, "To whom it may concern, we are residents of Tyler Drive in Gostown and would like the speed limit reduced from thirty-five miles per hour to twenty-five miles per hour. There is no need for a vehicle to travel any faster than twenty-five on this cul-de-sac. It is a short road with several inclines, and it is sometimes difficult to see what is coming up over the hill, especially if the sun is in your eyes. And the homes on the south side of the street have driveways and yards that slope down towards the street. So it is common to see children's toys and balls rolling down their driveway into the street. There are several small children that live on our street, as well as many dog walkers. When I walk my dog, I always feel that the vehicles whizzing by at thirty miles per hour is unnecessary and risky, and it's just a matter of time before I witness an accident. Please reduce the speed to a safer twenty-five miles per hour. I do not want to have to wait until an accident occurs for you to finally consider how inappropriate and unnecessary the thirty mile per hour speed is for Tyler Drive. We enjoy our neighbors and a safe community in which we reside. Let us govern with common sense and the safety of our children in mind. My husband and I will not be able to make the public hearing due to work travels. However, we want our voices to be heard. Please contact us if you have any questions regarding Suzie and Eric Gray, four, Gray, forty-seven Tyler Drive." So enter that one into the record. The second email comes to us from Richard Meany. Dear Selectmen, I am writing to you to express the opposition to the thirty mile per hour speed limit as currently proposed. Not only are Gostown drivers some of the most courteous and law-abiding motorists in the area, but they generally comply with our already low speed limits. The GPD, Gostown Police Department, has a significant presence in town to ensure that drivers comply with current speed limits. Current limits are easily aligned with safety concerns such as population density and road design. Some specific areas where I see the speed limit changes as government really going out of its way to impede on citizens' ability to reasonably travel include the following routes. Number one, the portion of Elm Street that is currently thirty-five miles per hour should stay that way. Thirty miles per hour for a lightly populated area with generally little to no pedestrian traffic is unreasonable. Number two, Page Hill Road north of Uprich Riding Stables should stay at thirty-five miles per hour. This area has even less foot traffic than Elm Street and is zoned agricultural, so it will never, emphasis added, get densely populated. And number three, Gorham Pond Road and Patty Hill Road to the northern parts of High Street are suitable for thirty-five miles per hour zones. Thank you for your consideration, Richard Meany, one forty-one Page Hill Road. I apologize for my oversight, not getting those in during a formal public hearing.
We also had a, an email from Mr. Wayne Perol pertaining to the, and if you want, you can read.
Yes, this was a late, this one coming today, I believe, right? To the Chair of the Board of Selectmen, I request the following be read in the public hearing on the Townwide Speed Limit Ordinance Proposal. I would like it to be part of the minutes. I will be unable to appear in person. I proposed that the new ordinance state all dead-end streets in zoned residential one and two, residential business one and two, and compact areas of the town of Gostown be set at twenty miles per hour, preferred twenty-five miles per hour is the second choice. They are now at thirty miles per hour. Options to set reduced speed limits could open for discussion as follows. I am requesting that one of the following should be adopted. Twenty miles per hour for dead-end streets. Some options to consider would be one-quarter mile or thirteen-hundred-and-twenty feet and under, one-half mile, twenty-six-hundred-and-forty feet and under, three-quarters of a mile, thirty-nine-hundred-and-twenty feet and under, or one mile, fifty-two-hundred-and-eighty feet and under. In these areas, there are commonly many children. The speed limit for school zones when children are present is twenty miles per hour. This would greatly reduce danger and provide safety to children. Safety when a school area should be consistent when at home. Especially those dead-end streets near school, whoops, excuse me. Especially those dead-end streets near schools, parks, and elderly housing. There would be no cost for signs. It would protect all. It only takes one car speeding and one child or person for an accident or tragedy to happen. This would also protect all residents from children to seniors. Please review a report on all dead-end streets and recommendations by, in print, I believe, Officer Panard around April two thousand and nine. Thank you, Wayne Perol, Fourteenth Spring Street. And he also adds that there's a picture and description to see why my request is important. And it does not have to be read aloud for the minutes, so I'll, I'll terminate it there. So that one will be incorporated in. Thank you very much, Nick. So again, my apologies for overlooking those, but they will be incorporated into the record for the public hearing for our consideration. Okay, I haven't corrected that, little oversight. Brings us back to the agenda, we're at the Selectmen's Discussion on New Business. And we're talking about goals, I guess, goal setting for the coming year. Sue, do you want to give us some history on?
Typically, first, before we get into developing goals, we discuss the process we want to use to develop our goals, and we review our goals from the previous year. That's at ninety in your packet. It's this time of year that all your committees and your departments are formulating their goals for the year. So sometimes what previous boards have done has just went and met with the department heads or they discussed it with the committees to see what their goals are. And then they come back to the board saying, okay, here are the goals of the committees that I've been assigned to in the departments. And then the board decides what they want to elevate to be a Selectmen's goal for the year.
Okay, so having made the committee appointments last week, the process essentially would be to have the Selectmen's rep go to each of the committees, have a discussion about what their goals are, and bring that discussion back to the Board of Selectmen for discussion and possible incorporation into a board's, Board of Selectmen's goal framework for, for the upcoming year.
Correct.
Okay.
In the past few years, they've kind of, the boards developed like four or five categories and then fit them into those categories. Last year was human resources was one, communications with the public, project management, budgets, town committee members. Project management's going to be a big one this year, and one that we're all going to strive to, to look at. We're looking too at the new finance software and its abilities in terms of project management because it's, it would be easier if it was all automated and you enter it once and then you can print out a report whenever you need it to give the board an update.
Sue, could I suggest, why don't we start by looking at the two thousand and twelve goals and see where they stand? For instance, number one A, that's been done.
That's done.
That's done.
But now you have three collective bargaining agreements for this year.
But I thought maybe if we look at the two twelve, two thousand and twelve goals, identify which ones have been done, which ones are ongoing, which ones perhaps aren't necessarily important to this board since it's a different makeup. But just start by doing that, does that make sense? And then see where we need to go to develop our own goals for two thousand and thirteen? So would you mind giving us?
No problem. Under human resources, we, as you just stated, A, Department of Public Works Collective Bargaining Agreement has already been negotiated and approved at town meeting. So that comes off the list. But to replace it will be three collective bargaining agreements to, to negotiate in two thousand and thirteen.
And those will be?
Fire, the patrolmen, and the dispatcher, and dispatchers and clerks at PD. So who's assigned police?
Phil.
Phil, okay, so he'll have two collective bargaining agreements. And Nick, you have fire, right? So you'll, typically, it's a Selectmen's rep that's on the negotiating committee. Of course, we can discuss that. Negotiation strategies are done in a non-meeting. It's not posted, there's no minutes. It's like meeting with an attorney. But you don't have to meet with an attorney for contract negotiations. Human resources ad hoc committee, we have not met in a while, but I, I would suggest that we resume these quarterly meetings. And I think an assignment has been made, a Selectman has been assigned to that. So that's an ongoing, it's more of a method of communication with the non-union employees as to the direction that the board's moving. Performance evaluations for department heads, we have finalized evaluation forms. We did that last year, and I believe we're scheduled before July first this year to actually do the evaluations. Because they've been, the department heads have been given copies of those evaluation forms.
So the forms have been completed, it's a matter of implementing them now.
Right.
Getting, getting started on the, the sequencing. Okay.
Total compensation review, we have this discussion, we have not budgeted any money for this. LGC did their final, I don't think they're continuing it, their salary and benefit reviews last year. I don't think they'll be doing another one this year. So the board has to decide whether they want to use that information. I would not rely only on that information to do a total compensation review because a position may have the same title in different towns, but if you actually looked at the job description, there may be a lot of differences in terms of duties. So I wouldn't just rely upon that as a source. I've always said that if you really wanted to do one, you would hire a consultant to come in and do it, so it's not prejudiced by anyone, and, and it's not seen as biased.
So there's some work to be done.
Mm-hmm.
Clearly on this one.
If you want to do this.
If we want to keep moving forward with it.
And then what is the purpose of this? I mean, if it comes out that, in a direction you didn't anticipate, are you, are you ready to go forward?
I, I think one of the things that I've heard over the, over the past years, at least when I was with the board, is we've got all these various pay scales, whether it's collective bargaining scales or, they're just all over the place. And one of the goals that we talked about a long time ago was trying to get everybody onto one, one scale. And, and I think sometimes we start, we, we just need to start because sometimes we, we get involved with the, well, we need to have a consultant, and we do in some places, but we start to put all of the various straw mare and arguments in front of us and we never get off the ground.
Right.
Because it just seems overwhelming. And, you know, as I mentioned, the police, the fire departments, the call matrix, sometimes, you know, you can set up the matrix, you plug people in so that they're, you know, you never want to take pay from anyone, you put them in an appropriate scale and, you know, they move on from there. But there has to be a starting point. And eventually, over the years, as new people come in and they get on the beginning of the new scale, things will work out, but we'll always be chasing our tail if we're.
Yeah, and what I found with civil service is that the challenge is not coming up with one scale. The challenge is placing each position on that scale.
Absolutely.
And that's where you come in with the differences and values.
And if I may, you, you may end up with, you know, as I said earlier, one other meeting, a widget maker ends up being a, a grade ten, but the incumbent, because of their, their salary, happens to be at a fifteen. And unfortunately, they start at that fifteen and that's where they stay. So there's nothing taken away from that employee, but when that person finally retires, the new incumbent comes in at the correct grade and then moves forward. And with the fire department, we have individuals on the new scale, and we have individuals doing the same work that are on the old scale, and, and there's a difference. But it's just, that's the only way you get into a new system.
It's painful, but you're right, that is the way.
You've got to start somewhere.
Mm-hmm.
Wait for it to catch up. Well, is that a goal that's important to this board to, to continue to move forward with? Get some sort of consensus on that?
I would agree.
Yeah, I, I thought you could.
I would too, is that, am I getting?
Okay, so we'll keep that as one of our reasons.
Okay.
And try and come up with some sort of a plan to move that forward.
Communications with the public, we, we made a lot of efforts this year to communicate with the public and, and I think that's one of the reasons why everything passed at town meeting that was on the warrant. We use letters to the editor, we use press releases, we use GTV. We use the town website, we're now testing out Facebook for certain projects. I, I think real efforts have been made under communications, but I think they should continue.
Yeah, I would agree, I think great strides have been made there. And I think you're right, this last election, I think, reflected that. I think the voters, at least the ones who showed up.
I mean, tonight was also a demonstration, it was on the message boards, the press release went out, and so we got much better showing, you saw the difference between the first public hearing and the second, and there were increased efforts between that time.
Mm-hmm. And during, during the last election, I mean, just overhearing conversations, the people who did show up to vote seemed to be much, much more educated.
Mm-hmm.
You know, there's always those who walk into the polls, they know exactly how they're going to vote, they've done their research, and I think that percentage of voters was much higher in this last election than it has been in the past.
The majority of the voters that I did see in Panardville that came to, to vote, I mean, they either had the paper with them or they had some sort of cheat sheets to basically, they, most of them did their homework, they were all, you know, well, well set, ready to go so that they had the right answers to put down on the, on the voting ballots.
Yeah, the voter's guide, we got a lot of positive comments.
Yep, that helped out, that helped out quite a bit.
But there are things, you know, decisions that have to be made. Do, for example, D is the all-boards meeting, do you want to hold an all-boards meeting? I think another, and I'm not sure if it comes under communications, but Nick had mentioned workshops on different projects or topics.
Yeah, I think, well, to go back to A, B, C, I think we just continue with those, continue to work, look for ways to improve our communications, technologies that become available and the sort of stuff. And D, I think, I think the all-boards meeting is, is, is a positive thing, and I think a worthwhile thing. If nothing else, it brings people together in the same room and they look at each other face to face, they can associate names with faces, a lot of people can't do that. I, I just think it's a good opportunity to bring folks together.
And, and I think for that to be successful, you have to plan way ahead and let people know at least a month ahead of when that date is because they start making their own plans.
Yeah, and they need time to prepare.
Mm-hmm.
I remember one that we did in the Grassmere Town Hall, and a lot of folks came and they were just sitting there blank-faced. And, you know, it doesn't really provide much.
And maybe doing it on a Monday night would help, but wouldn't conflict with their other meetings because the only Monday night meetings are the Board of Selectmen's meetings typically.
Yeah.
So if you want to continue that, we can come up with some dates on that and give them time to develop their goals so they have something to report. May, May is good, you know, before vacations start.
So if that's the case, we'd want to start framing that up.
Yes.
Shortly and getting the word out to the various committees and.
And, and your expectations, what do you expect them to bring to that meeting?
Yes.
Is it their goals for the year, is it?
Maybe a set of generic, generic questions to get their mind rolling. So when they come to the meeting, you know, we'll have some worthwhile discussion right out of the gate.
You may want to give them your goals and say, how do your goals, your committees' goals interface with our goals or?
Now, me, is the monthly column in the Gostown News, how, how does this board feel about that?
That didn't, we didn't do that, that much. Well, I think, if I recall, some were submitted and some were printed and some weren't.
Yeah.
So.
My experience with them didn't seem to be all that successful.
Yeah.
Doesn't mean we shouldn't continue to try it, maybe we weren't doing it properly, maybe we let it slip, slip through the cracks, I'm not sure, but.
And, and if they do it, they like to see it regularly, you know, they don't want to give you a column and then have a blank, if it's once a month or whatever.
Yeah, they need a commitment to the column space in the newspaper.
Yes, right.
Yeah, yeah. And what are the board's thoughts on that? I mean, that requires, you know, some level of effort, although a lot of times it's the department head who would actually write the article.
Yes.
Present it to the board, who would refine it and maybe edit it and then get it into the newspaper, so. What are the board's thoughts?
I think, I think the idea is good for issue-related column. I don't know if forcing columns every month or every week, trying to make up an issue or, you know, that sometimes doesn't always work. But I think if it's issue-oriented, it's something that's important, something that's.
So really not a column, but more of a press rela- So really not a column, but more of a press release would be an issue-related.
Well, even a column, I don't know if a column wouldn't be bad, or a story, or a press release, but something representing the board's position or...
Issue-specific.
The issues that the board are dealing with, even if we haven't made up our mind or things that we're grappling with, make more issue-based versus time-dependent.
Yeah, I know in my association, there's a bunch of different newsletters that come out regularly, a lot of it, it's like people are just struggling to put stuff in there and it's like, you know, why bother? So, yeah, so I guess maybe we revisit that with more of a slant towards, let's keep an eye out for important issues that we really need to go above and beyond to communicate to the public.
We didn't do monthly television shows, but they did do one on the budget. I'm not sure if they did any others.
I guess it's just something, the same thing with this, if maybe now that we have or we will be getting a full-time director there, if we approach them and say, would you be able to find someone who would host a show? And it's their program and they can review our summaries and ask for one or two of us to appear on whatever time they do their taping, and they ask us the question. So the topics are chosen by GTV, the format is theirs, but we make ourselves available and we actually voice to them that we would like to see a regularly appearing program where the issues that the board is dealing with are brought out to the public.
G, I think is a good one, I think we have absolutely continued forward with that. That's a great public service that we provide.
Did we just have one done, did the police department just have one done?
They did, it was last year, I think.
Did you get the results?
I assume we did.
Was it 2012 or 2011?
Well, last year, last year they got recertified, it was the year before.
Yeah.
Year before the St. A's, the St. A's students.
They do it every other year.
Every other year, yeah.
But there should be one coming up this year.
St. A's students, they do that for the police department.
So we need to identify which departments, you know, are in this year's cycle and how do we get a handle on that? Revealing historically where they were in the cycle and who's up next and who's on deck, kind of thing?
Yeah, the only ones that, like I said, police and Parks and Rec were done in 2009 and then police did it in 2011.
I believe police have St. A's do it, Parks and Rec commissioned a survey, they did...
They did their survey.
Yeah.
So I would think the questions to ask are, is it criminal justice department at St. A's that's doing the survey?
Sociology.
Or is it, so if it's sociology, would they be willing to alternate? You know, do police one year, do highway the next year, do someone else the next year? So that we're giving them something to do.
Yeah, I think it's their statistics and methodology class in sociology that does it.
Sue, do you have a contact at St. A's that we work with?
Left, so I don't know who the chief's contact is now. Was it Dr. Depoya used to do it, but I'm not sure who's doing it now, so I'll ask the chief.
Okay. H is making it easier to interact with the town, increase number to have website, forums, or site a business occupancy project.
That's ongoing.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
Yeah.
I has been done.
Yeah.
Project management, large projects, Mass Road Drainage, that's been done.
It's done.
Heinrich's Drainage, that's been done. The road program, that's been done.
That will continue though, each year, yeah. Lynchville Janus Park, this is the last year, they have till October 31st to hook up to water. The final letter went out last week letting them know that this is the deadline, we're closing out this grant because Rick Skringer up at the state really wants to close out this grant, it's been open for quite a while.
Okay.
Finance software, we're implementing this year. Fire station improvements, now, last year the board had said that they were, they tabled it because the school was going forward with the bond and they didn't want to have competing bond articles.
Mm-hmm.
So the board's going to have to make a decision where they're going with these fire station improvements and whether or not they want to go forward.
But I think this was relative to actually establishing the ad hoc committee and having them do their work and come back and verification, that's been done.
All the ad hoc committee work is done.
Done in the report.
Right, so it's sitting there waiting for action.
Exactly.
And I think, in speaking with the chief, not speaking out of term, but I think he has some other stuff up his sleeve and I think he's going to bring this back on the table for us.
Yes.
If I could, I brought this up, I think, my last year on the board. I really think that this board at some point needs to sit, and whether it's a workshop or whatever, but look at the big picture, the 30,000-foot view, because we've got the fire station improvements, which would probably involve a bond, we have the Barnard land redevelopment. If you look in the CIP matrix, there's a library, potential library expansion coming up. I'm sure the police department is not that far and busting out of the seams of the building, so we need to look down the road and strategically figure out in what order are we doing these things versus just looking at one project and trying to figure out if it's okay for this year or should it go on next year. We really need to coordinate how we're going to, you know, we take out two bonds on two things and then for the next 15 years, we can't do anything. You know, there's competing interests that we need to look at.
And we also need to coordinate at some level with the school folks because, you know, like it or not, we're joined at the hips when it goes, when it comes to how we spend, or we spend taxpayer dollars.
Spend a lot of money.
You know, we tried that last year, we tried to engage them early in the process. In my opinion, it broke down quickly. You know, the intent was there to try and have those conversations, what are you trying to push forward, what are we trying to push forward, what's the best combination and what's in the best interest of the town, but could we now send them a letter and tell them we're at our stage of the game and we're reviewing our goals and this is one of the goals for 2013 for us, we want to know what the school plans so that we can systematically, as Nick said, I mean, we can list our objectives in order. I mean, is it too early in the year to ask them for a letter to see what their goals are or their drive is for the schools next year? I don't think it's ever too early to ask for it, the problem we run into is, whoa, we haven't really met yet and we haven't done that, so, you know, we'll have to wait.
If we send, if we, when we send a letter, call us, we send a letter and put a date, tell them we need a date.
What do you need us?
Well, they should be submitting to CIP, that's going to be due...
Yep.
Beginning of May and that will give you an idea of what direction they're going.
Yeah.
I mean, does that make sense to, I mean...
Oh, yeah, absolutely, in my opinion it does. And we tried it last year, maybe we weren't forceful enough, but we tried early on, actually.
Actually, we met with them.
Met with them.
And I think it was decided that the budget committee chairman, the board chairman and the school board chairman would all meet and communicate.
When the big government hand at the last minute, you know, last hour, get it done, you know, and that's, that's push it through.
Right. So, yeah, I mean, I think we need to extend the hand again.
Yep, we'll make, we'll make the offering and...
It's never too early to do that, so maybe we need to draft a letter, you know, ask him to sit down real preliminarily, you know, what's your...
Well, maybe that will come out at the all boards meeting too, when we invite him to the all boards meeting in May.
Yeah, but...
Will they be able to come if it's on a Monday night?
Yeah, they meet on opposite, well, we won't do the first and third, we'll do a second or fourth because I think they meet on the first and third Monday.
So still send them a letter saying that when we have the all boards meeting, that's when we're going to be looking for direction as to what your goals and what our goals are and what your plans are so that we can...
Yeah, we can send the letter early now so they can start thinking of that for the all boards meeting, but I don't know, you know, you have a superintendent who's leaving and I'm not sure the school board's going to, well, maybe they will, maybe they will say, let's, I don't know if they're going to go again with the same bond or break it up, I mean, they heard from some...
We can only do the best we can, we can extend the effort, do it early, I mean, lead the horse to water, but, you know, that's not...
Make them drink.
That's right, it's...
I mean, I think it only makes sense that way, they're, they know that we've begun the process, we're in the process of getting it going, making it, making it whole so that we have our goals developed and, you know, we know, we know exactly where we stand, we have a good foothold.
Yeah, maybe if we, if that target, we look to get that done late May before school's out so that, you know, people aren't now divided with their family responsibilities and go from there. So do you want, Sue, is that something to take a stab at, drafting a letter?
Sure.
To the chair of the school board?
From the chair of the Goss Town Board of Selectmen, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Folks are comfortable there?
Yep.
All right. Kind of bounced around a little bit. 3B, project updates required by department heads.
That looks like it's still valid for any of the projects that are running.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hey, what else we got, Sue, budgets?
Budgets, I guess we just changed 2012 to 2013 and 2013 to 2014 throughout.
Mm-hmm. Yep, that's ongoing, something we'll need to deal with.
Town committee members, the onsite training, I think that's valuable, I'm not sure how much LGC is doing right now, they're, as you know, going through their reorganization and it won't be LGC providing this type of training, it would probably be NHMA providing that type of training.
And I'd like to revisit B and look at how we do that.
Yes.
I think we can improve in that, that area.
You wanted to revisit... Revisit the recognition of volunteers, that's in the rules procedure.
How we recognize them, when we recognize them, what we recognize them for. Okay.
And that's, 9B is just your update on your selectman's assignment.
Yes, does anybody see any...
The only one, that's blank, is that CMAC Steering Committee. But when I do the charter, I'll have recommendations between Carl and I in terms of composition of a committee, I would imagine a selectman's rep would be on it, but you can decide later, you don't have to decide tonight because we're away from that, aways from it.
On the wellness committee?
Yes.
Monthly, do we, do they know what date or they change their date from?
I asked them if they could come up with the same date, it would be so much easier for people to schedule if it's the same day and then the participation would probably improve too.
Okay.
Yeah, so at their first committee meeting, they will be discussing that.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Is there anything else on the new business? Or anybody else? Okay, yep, no problem.
I have questions, just to see if we're still doing this, department heads used to make quarterly reports, they didn't come in and actually do reports, but they provided us in writing a quarterly update, is that still being done?
Actually, I was discussing that at our last meeting, I said, some of you give me monthly, some of you give me quarterly, I think the way we left it with the board was quarterly reports and I've been putting them, when they come in, I put them in your file folder under selectmen departments reports.
As well as the overtime reports that they used to generate?
Those overtime reports have fallen by the wayside due to software issues and a conflict with something, I forget what it was, but we are building it into the new finance software, the same holds that we had for the reasons for the overtime.
We had, and this goes back to the Highway Traffic Safety Committee, about a year and a half, we had a resident on Range Road who came to the board, actually came to Highway Traffic Safety and he had a request that on the intersection of Henry Bridge and Mass Road, as you're heading from the village into Manchester, where you're turning left, that left-hand turn, his question was, could we see about getting a left-hand turn arrow?
On the light?
On the light.
Because of the people who like to jump.
That was submitted to the state.
Just to give, well, I don't know if that works and the, yeah, just to give the people who are making a left-hand turn, particularly during the peak travel hours, that 30 seconds of turning ability. I think in your last meeting, you voted to send a letter to the state to have a roundabout at that intersection included in the 10-year plan and when I looked at the Highway Traffic Safety minutes, the topic came up about the turn arrow, but it changed to the roundabout. So my concern is, it's been a year and a half now, can we make sure that we're pursuing the arrow as the short-term fix? I mean, maybe 10 years down, somebody may want to...
Who's got public works? You do. I think Carl told me he did pursue the arrow and they thought that a roundabout would be better, but you can check with him.
Really? Henry Bridge, turning where?
Left.
When you're going to a Manchester, a left turn lane to go on Henry Bridge, right?
Correct, because when I looked at the letter that the board voted on to send to the, I think it was Southern New Hampshire Planning...
Yes.
...to include it in the 10-year plan, it talked about looking at a roundabout because you didn't have to do the land-taking you would need to put in the left-hand turn, but the left-hand turn lane's already there, everything's already there, the only thing you need is a light.
And just reconfigure the traffic pattern.
Yeah, and a roundabout may be 10 years down the line in a 10-year plan, but adding a green arrow, I don't think is a long-term issue, I think it can address that safety issue relatively quicker, so I guess if you could just pursue that.
Other new business that you, I got a call on it from a reporter today about the women's state prison and what will it be when they move that? And I said, we haven't had...
When and if they move it?
Yeah, we haven't had discussions, right. He said that someone was quoted as saying kindergarten, I said, well, we already have a public kindergarten, it's brand new, so I'm not sure why we...
We didn't see that article, there was an article, there was something, there was something written.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep, strip mall.
That whole issue's way up in the air is what's starting to happen with that prison, I mean, that's far from being decided.
Where are they thinking of putting it?
Next to the men's prison.
Next to the men's prison, we're out at, oh, the facility...
Laconia?
Yes, Laconia School.
Oh.
Yeah.
I guess they're up to 124 inmates now and it's only allowed to hold 104? 100, yeah, just a little over 100, they're way overcrowded. That article, that article was in the paper the other day.
So you know that, yeah, the reporters are calling on it and I said, I haven't had any discussions with anyone on it and that would be a county discussion, which I hope when the time comes, they would involve the town in those discussions.
Yeah, well, first the state has to decide...
Right.
...whether or not they're going to stay there, expand there, move someplace else. Yeah, then we have to defer default to the county, their land.
Right.
So that's a long process. Any other old business or new business? Just one item of interest, as you recall, I attended the St. A's retirement party for Father Jonathan, it was very nice, he was very touched by the proclamation. It was nice to sit with him and some of the board of directors, St. A's at a table, some of the members of the baseball team, talked baseball, we had a little trivia contest they did. It was, it was very nice, he was very touched, so it was a nice thing.
They had a nice mass room on Sunday too and a reception following, so it was a whole weekend of activities for him, yeah, as we said, he was busy all weekend.
And the baseball team at St. A's won the doubleheader.
Life was good. Anything else? Sue, do we need to go?
We do need a non-public, something came up today under real estate, so that would D, acquisition of real estate.
All righty.
And C to discuss.
And, oh, yeah, C to discuss.
Before we go into non-public, I'd just like to make a statement based on, we took a vote last meeting after non-public for a letter that went out and I just wanted to clarify that my no vote was based on a disagreement I had with the wording of the letter. Regardless of that wording, whether it was changed or not, the final outcome of the board would not have changed and I fully concur with the decision of the board, the ultimate disciplinary decision, but I just wanted to make that clear so there was no misunderstanding.
Appreciate that, thank you. Appreciate that, thank you. All right, so we need to take action to go into non-public.
Take a motion, non-public, RSA 91-A colon 3, subsection D.
And C?
And C.
Okay, do we have a second?
C and D, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
What's the time, Sue?
The time is 9:09.
Okay, yeah, yes.
Yes. And yes.
Yes for myself. So we'll go into non-public, let the folks on GTV 16, a regular business meeting has concluded. Once we come back, we won't be discussing anything further, so. With that being said, we'll go into non-public session. How's that, Darrell?